We'll call the meeting to other at 12:40. This is a continuation of the November 13th meeting. We'll start with a roll call.
Cheryl Sanger, alternate.
Bob Gilbert, member.
Terry Waite, member.
Ray Kaczynski, member.
Sanepi goes member.
Wendy Rathgaber, alternate.
Harry Nodowitz, alternate.
Bill Larson, ex officiar.
And it looks like we've got a couple of open spots. And because this is a continuation, I'm going to seat the same two alternates. So Harry, Harry and Wayne. Which one do we want to attack first? Might as well do the signs, right? Because that should be straightforward.
What, if, it would help me, Mr. Chairman, what would we like to do at this stage? We need to get, we need to basically, if there are any changes to the wording, other words, we want to actually publish this change and then hold a public hearing?
I believe that's the case.
Right. So one way, what I would suggest that that's the case, I don't know how many had a chance to read this, but we should go through the, some of the significant changes. And if anybody has any comments or something they want to add or change, now's the time to bring it. So starting with definitions, the only change in here is we've added two new sections, 333-88, 89, which defines political advertising and freedom of expression signs. The freedom of expression signs, Mark, we're going to have to get Jay to take a look to see whether she can live with this or not.
Yeah.
Is there anybody who's got any?
I have a question. Sign, permanent. It says, "Any question which is intended to be or constructed, or so constructed, as be lasting," should the "be" be in there?
You're looking at what section now? 333-81-1 or?
No, 333-86.
Okay.
Definitions.
Can we add the word "to" in there, "as to be lasting"?
"To be lasting" or "as lasting," I wasn't sure. But it doesn't-
This is taken right out of the-
Yeah.
Yeah, right. I mean, I just copied it.
Oh, okay. So it's nothing-
No, 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 this is no, this is not new. The only thing that's new is what's in red. Now, I don't know when US came out, red or blue.
No, mine didn't come out there.
Other than that, it's all the same. All right. Well, since we're changing everything else, I don't see why we can't. So you want to, you, any sign which is intended-
Oh, oh, oh.
-to be or s- oh, sign, we're looking permanent, any sign which is intended to be or so constructed as to be-
To be.
As to be.
As to be lasting?
Okay. All right. I was, I didn't know that this came out.
Yeah, no, all of the beginning of this, there's been no changes.
All right.
So from 333.9 all the way up to 87, all those definitions are straight out of the-
The book. Okay.
Right?
Gotcha.
But even with knowing that, I have a little follow-up question. Last time we talked about informational signs as being applicable to the trail signs as well.
Right.
But it says here that they do not provide direction. So can trail signs still be under informational signs?
Uh, it, it's a, well, let's see, let's read the definition. They have a definition of informational sign, "A sign that pretends to know specific business, building, or direction." Yeah, generally, they do not provide direction.
You don't have like a-
They're like a bus stop, well, they, they don't, they don't define a direction of how to get to someplace.
I see what you're saying.
They provide information about a bus stop, like the Waterville, you know, the ski area sign out there, you know, the home of freestyle skiing, I guess, would be an informational sign.
I gotcha. Okay.
All right? Okay, moving on. And I'll point, again, the fir- I'll just go through each one of these. 35111, statement of purpose, no change. 35112, scope and application, there's really been no change. 1121, the provisions of these regulations, this one did change. And what we added to is the following, that the provisions of these regulations apply to signs in a window. So it's clear that if you put a sign in a window, these regulations apply. But the provisions of these regulations do not apply to signs which are not readable beyond the boundaries of the lot or parcel in which they're located. So we're not governing signs that, that aren't visible off the lot. Now, that sounds like a change, but if you actually read the definition on the 333-81.1, on the term "sign," it basically says the same thing. You know, so it's really, I don't think is any change. My interpretation would have been that, that, it just makes it a little clearer, that's all. All right. So then there's no changes to, you get up to 3511.4.2, and instead of reading prohibitive lighting, we've added prohibited lighting for signs.
Okay.
Rather than suggesting that all lighting was, you know, that this applies to everything. And that's the only change. I just made sure it was signs. And then we took out of there that it forbid gooseneck lamps, and I've deleted that. I can't understand why, as long as that there's no, you know, that's, it's indirect lighting, not an open light bulb, I don't have a problem with a gooseneck lamp.
That would be probably covered under lighting anyway, right?
Yeah.
Well, this is prohibited lighting for signs. So just, it's different than, I don't know what, what it reads for lighting.
I don't either.
But relative to signs, we're saying gooseneck is okay, as long as it's not an exposed bulb. Section 3421, just a couple of wording changes in there to make it clearer, that's all. And, and I added a, this is talks about the process you can use to get an exception to the lighting provision. And I just added a statement that says, "Exceptiones are also permitted if the lighting is required by law or regulation." So if, for instance, a flashing light was required by law, then an exception can be granted for that reason as well. The rest is just verbiage of terms of the process that you go through. Now, 35114, in between, I've added, it's a 2A-
Bill, can I back up for a second?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
You've crossed out "lighting" and put in "sign." I'm wondering if, but then, you know, it kind of gets lighting out of the sentence. I'm wondering if you might be better off to put the word "sign" before "lighting" and keep the lighting in, the proposed sign lighting.
You mean sign and light?
Yeah. The proposed sign lighting does not detract from the natural appearance in the proposed sign lighting.
Are we, are we concerned about, I, the reason I changed it is I thought about, are we really judging the lighting or are we judging the combination of the light and the sign?
Well, I think in this particular section, we're discussing the lighting.
Only the lighting. So you'd like to go back to lighting, that's no problem. That's the way it read in the beginning.
The sign lighting, or-
Sign, light?
Instead of saying just lighting, just say sign lighting.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. Down to section, it's a new section, I don't know how they're going to number it, but I will number it, the 42A. Prohibited sign features. What, what it writes now says is no action or animated signs are permitted, is what it reads today. And I've added that signs cannot make sounds as well. So you can't have a noisy sign. Exceptions to these features are granted in those cases where the feature is required by law or regulation. So if having a siren on your sign was a result of law, it would be allowed. All right. 351144, general sign requirements. Now, right now, all we have is that a sign requiring a permit be designed to withstand the wind load of 30 pounds. I would suggest that it's only outside signs that we're concerned about. I don't think we really care if an inside sign can withstand the wind load, right?
Right.
And that I've added here of provisions that define the maximum size of any sign anywhere in the valley for any reason. And, and we say the maximum size is going to be 12 by 24 foot. And the maximum height from the top of the sign to the grade is 25 foot. That is one big sign. But, but anything bigger than that, no, for any reason. And this is really intended to prevent the sign on the top of the 80-foot pole bit, you know?
That's a lot.
25 foot is about what the Town Square sign is now. It's big, go down there, take a look at that son of a gun.
If you stand next to it, yeah.
It's big.
I never realized it was that big.
But I'm open to whatever you want.
When you say 12 by 24, is that 12 wide or wide or 24 high?
I don't, I don't know, I think either way is okay. Terry suggested 12 by 24 were pretty decent dimensions to, you know, in terms-
4 by 8, 4 by 8 is difficult.
Well, that's really small, though, for-
Oh, and these signs are well beyond, the Town Square sign is much bigger.
A typical business sign would be, if you go around town, you're not going to find hardly any sign that's bigger than a 4 by 8. That's kind of a standard.
Except the directional signs going in, like the Town Square sign is bigger than that. The directional sign at, right up on the corner up here is bigger than that.
Yeah.
Bigger than 4 by 8.
Oh, yeah.
The directional, where is that?
The one at-
Triple I Road?
Right, Triple I Road and Route 49 is bigger than 4 by 8. Now, basically, I just, in this paragraph, setting the maximum, in almost every other category, I'm making them smaller than this.
Yeah.
But I'm saying under no circumstances, if you can dream up anything, are you allowed to have a sign bigger than this?
Could you, it's-
But I, I don't know what, but I'll do whatever you want, you know, I'll, you know, part of us is try to reach some, but the limit is directional signs can get pretty darned big.
Right.
But it just sounds so hard.
It does.
It almost seems like you're, you're, I mean, it is saying it's allowable, but you still need a sign permit, but how does somebody, I don't know, it seems like we're opening the door to something as opposed to-
Well, I don't think so, because in every other case, we're defining what the, with signs, sizes that are much smaller than this.
Yeah, I think, any kind of a business sign, I don't think needs to be any bigger than 4 by 8, because-
Right.
Have we measured-
I mean, you can see, this isn't a big enough town to be able to have, not see that.
But wait, have you measured like Golden Eagle and the Conference Center? I mean, literally measured, so I just went and stood next to them to try to get a feel, and they're big.
They are big.
I mean, I didn't take the measuring stick out, but-
And, you know, I don't even remember seeing this, so I don't know, but the Black Bear is, is, that's not 4 by 8, I believe. I, I don't know, I'm trying to picture the go on the window.
Especially when you throw in a change panel sign, they, you know, you need a-
Yeah, but I think it more, a change panel sign would be more like a general sign, general direction sign.
The Conference Center.
Well-
It's a change panel.
That's true.
Snowy is as well.
So they can put the event in?
Yep. Snowy is too.
What I, here's what I did with the business sign. So this is something that's naming the name of the business, like the Golden Eagle Lodge. We said a business sign is limited to 32 square feet.
Yes, that's-
So no dimensions, but you can't be more than 32 square foot.
And are we sure that everyone is within that right now?
No, I'm, I guarantee you they're all preggerland or not, but they're grandfathered, unless they have to change something.
You've got to prevent a Town Square sign for every business, as you go down that road, it would be brutal to see signs that big. That's why I think 32 square foot is reasonable, I think it's large enough to be seen, and it, you know, for a business itself, and still be within limits anyway.
Well, I could take this section out and basically say that for directional signs, the size of directional signs can't exceed this. And make no statement in here relative to sign, other than, we could make some general statement that if, I can rewrite this and say, if, if, if not specified anywhere in these regulations, then it's up to the selectmen to tell you the size that you're allowed. Because somebody's going to come in and say, "I don't have a business sign, I have a such and such a sign, and I can make it." You know, you get into one of those.
Or make us something like a, a statement after that huge size of a, that, a special exception that the selectmen have to approve, but nothing will be larger than that. In other words, it won't even give you the segment options of making it bigger. But somebody could come to you and say, "This is the reason I need a 12 by 24 footer."
Yeah, if you-
And then you, then you make your decisions based on what's in town or how they are. I don't know, that's just an idea.
The, a little bit of the dilemma is that if you make exceptions around everything, it's very hard for the selectmen in reading the regulations to say, "Well, I know it says, it could be this, but we're not going to let you do it." What it becomes is the standard, if they meet that standard, you are going to let them do it. It's very hard to tell them no. And then even if you tell them no, the ZBA is likely to say, "Well, then you wrote this number in here." You know, you got to allow it.
Yeah. That's a big sign, 24 by 12.
What happens is somebody, if, if you take-
That was my guess, is that when I went out and measured Times Square, the one down here.
Yeah.
The one, the big sign going into Town Square that's on the intersection of the Ring Road there. That, I thought it was tall by 24.
Well, it might very well be that.
It's big.
But in, is not, nothing says it's, it couldn't be grandfathered, but I just wonder if it might, we want, we want to control it a little bit more now.
Okay.
What do you do if somebody comes and builds a hotel, wants to build a hotel in the future, or say the Gondola base, whatever? And we take out that, I'm, I'm, just, just a question, because I don't want the answer for it. And you take out the size of the sign, I think that, stating it that way, it looks pretty big, but even though we already have some. So if you grandfather some, maybe what happens with something new that would fit that bill, how do you allow them to do that? Or something similar.
I, I think if you put in a reasonable size sign, 4 by 8, and I'm not saying that, that's just my experience for a business or however we want to define what the sign is. And someone was to come in and build this Las Vegas hotel, or like the one they're going to put in, thinking that's a big thing. They, they could go come and ask for a special exception. Nothing prevents anybody from asking for a special exception, that one or two things. And then their, the selectmen at that point, looking at the situation, what it was it's developing, and the arguments perhaps for it.
I disagree with you. I don't think the selectmen have any power to grant special exceptions. Their, their role is to enforce these regulations. If we want to allow special exceptions, we have to write in here that either the selectmen can grant you a special exception on these rules, as we did with the lighting, or we have to write in here the ZBA, and even there, you got to, you've got to give the ZBA some direction of what can they allow as an exception. You, you can't just accept people for your own, I, I don't think you can, right? Is Mark here? Mark, no. You can exempt people from your own regulations.
Well, you, in the case of the ZBA, something as general as, isn't a hardship, I believe is, is a reasonable-
If you could prove it's a hardship, right. Yes, yes.
So if someone came in and said, "I get this sign that no one can see, and because of the location of the building, it makes it a hardship."
Right.
Because, you know, we can't make it known to the people that were here. I'm not saying that you can't put some sort of a ideal in there for exceptions, but I don't think you can cover them all. I just think that there is, you know, you could put in there every rule and regulation you wanted to, that would be used as an exception, and you're going to have a new one come up the first time, that's what's going to happen. So I think you have to, at some point in time, there's going to have to be some judgment involved.
But that, that hardship is also tied into something unique on the property.
Right.
Big rock, cliff, something like that. It's not just the hardship hardship.
Is it defined where a hardship is?
Oh, yeah.
Specific?
ZBA's got to look at five separate things.
But what happens if we make the new limit smaller than what most of the existing inns and lodges have now, and they go to redo it? At what point is it grandfathered, and at what point is it a new sign?
It's, it's-
If you change it, it's not grandfathered, go to the new ones.
Once they change, once they even try to repair it, it's not grandfathered.
So then, isn't that hardship?
Well, you wrote those regulations in here.
If you repair it, huh?
Yep. So haven't we-
I think it says that, I think it says you can't even repair it in your trouble.
Yeah, so haven't we created the hardship then? And aren't we opening a can of worms? I think we should be really certain what the existing dimensions are and what's within, I don't know, it just seems like if all of a sudden we say, "No, all these signs are too big," then what happens?
Yeah, but I don't, I don't think it's good policy to go out and find the biggest sign in town.
I was wrong, you can maintain them.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I, I don't think it's good policy to go out and find the biggest sign in town and say, "Okay, this is now our regulation." I should think there should be other reasons for setting aside.
All right. Directional signs, so what we're, just so we set the stage here, we're basically now saying you can only have direction, the only place directional signs can exist are at the intersection of arterial roads. So these are roads that are through roads, right? Basically, it's where they are now, with a few exceptions that aren't there.
I think it makes sense, it's reasonable, it's a good reason to do it.
What would be a reasonable size?
For the direction sign?
If you want to build a new one.
Well, it, it would be built by the town. If I'm not mistaken, the directional signs are going to be town signs.
I wrote this on the basis, whoever's the guy who comes forward with the idea is responsible to raise the money.
It's on his own private layer.
We, I've, I've written it now such that the selectmen absolutely have the right to say, "You must make it look like this." But the person who wants to put the sign up is going to have to bear the expense of doing it.
Well, I think that you could, what you can do, if it's a directional sign, you can limit the size of the, you're talking about for an individual business at this particular point.
No, no, just a directional sign. So this is like shopping, ice arena, one of those signs. Or it's the multi-panel signs that say, "Black Bear Lodge, da-da-da-da-da," where there's a bunch of them on, all at once.
I think where there's a multi-panel sign, what you can do is limit the size of the banner portion of the sign. And then limit the size of the panel. And you, the number of panels would dictate what the size, I don't think you say you can only put five panels in or anything like that. You limit the size and the height perhaps of the banner of the sign or the frame of the sign, and limit the panels, and just let them stack it in. Like, there's a lot of panels in the sign out here, but you could limit the height, you could limit the frame size, and not limit the number of panels. I mean, it's a directional sign, so you've got to allow them to put-
Okay. What would we, what would we suggest is the size of the frame?
What hap- what happens when you have one of these signs and you're going, you put a number of banners? Let's say they make, on one particular sign, it needs to be six banners. If part of the sizing is going to be the size of the lettering, and I only say that because you don't want to create a situation where people have to stop their car to read what's on the sign.
We're recreating the signs that got rid of 10 years ago. Why are we doing this?
No, because I don't think anything wrong with them. I don't think they were bad.
They were awful.
They were functional.
But what if we do-
They all blend, you couldn't tell what was where.
But if we, what if we did it by category, guys? Like all, like all the lodges and hotels, you know, have a specified area, and then the shops underneath or whatever.
Yeah, but they're not listing the individual shops. It's just going to be shops.
And everyone agrees the sign everywhere is-
No, no, it depends. There are two different categories. There, there is a category of directional signs that apply to a business complex, and the only business complex we have is Town Square.
Right.
All right? And then there were rules that apply to businesses that are not in a business complex. They are also allowed to have a directional sign or be part of another directional sign. In that case, they can list the name of their business. But if you're in a, if you're in a complex, you can't list the name of your business.
Because then it's too many.
It's too many.
Right, right.
So it just says shops.
Yeah.
But Roper Real Estate, if they were on a directional sign, could have a sign that said, "Roper Real Estate," with an arrow pointing where it is. That's it, it's just the purpose is direction. How do I get to Roper Real Estate? It's not to advertise their business. My complaint with what they've done is I think their sign is advertising the business. I don't think it's directional at all.
Yeah, I don't, I think if it was a directional sign, that doesn't-
What if we change this to 10 foot wide and 20 foot high?
I, whatever, whatever the pleasure or the planning board is.
You mean, if, this is for the listing, Ray?
Well, instead it is 12 by 24, which is the largest one. I'm suggesting 10 foot wide and 20 foot high.
Yeah, but if it's a-
Would be the maximum.
Think about like a directional sign.
Yeah, all sense.
Yeah, but I, I think directional signs should be limited, I think Bill's right. I think that, you know, let's not pick on it, but I mean, it's, it's an example, a real, realty sign, it's a beautiful sign and all that, but it's a directional sign, basically it's supposed to be.
It is under the regulations, supposed to be a directional sign.
But it does look like an advertising sign.
Yeah.
And I think it's bigger than what a directional sign should be for a, an individual business. Because I think, when they, when you get there, then you have your advertising sign or your logo sign and so forth. But if everybody else, if you're going to put a directional sign in a town panel sign, you're only going to have a panel. You're not going to have a big advertising thing, you're just going to have the, the arrow in a, in the name of the business. So I don't think an individual one should be allowed to be different than that.
Our, our goal is to prevent anybody in the future of having an individual sign.
Yeah, it's not an individual sign.
They, it, it, the way I've written these now suggests that you must make every effort to use an existing sign. And only when you can't do that are we going to allow you to put up a directional sign on your own. Now, of course, there could be some cases where-
A panel size is going to be limited, and I always say that because somebody could go with a panel that's, I don't know, however long and two feet high, and that's his big panel. I mean, if you limit them, I guess, in the sense that you can see them, you could have more. But if everybody wanted a two foot, I mean, how, how-
Well, the, the purpose of these is simply to provide direction as to how to get to the business. It's not to provide space for a logo, it's not to provide advertising, it's simply to provide direction, that's all. You don't need, you, you've just got to be readable. And understand that there's an arrow on the overall sign pointing someplace.
I think we should get right down to the size of the letter.
I think people-
And I, I don't think we can do that today, because I, I don't know how big a letter it is that I can read. But if we found out, and perhaps in the report, perhaps they addressed it, I mean, but-
Well, he addressed it a bit in, in the prething that they sent, that what we really need to do is a hierarchy, hier- hierarchy of signage.
Right.
Guiding people with, you know, establishing what's the main thing someone new to the town needs to see right off. And maybe it should be a different size sign. But I think Bill's got a good first step here in establishing these overall guidelines, because I think the key right now is to prevent a whole string of signs going down, you know, the streets.
Remember where you are today, there is no size limit on signs today.
Right.
None, zero, on directional signs unspecified.
Yeah.
So in theory, in theory, if somebody, I don't know what we'd do if somebody came and said, "I want to put up a sign like McDonald's on the top of a stick." And, and I, I, the regulations don't say you can't have that unless we're going to make a case that detracts from the natural beauty of the valley, which is always those ones that the ZBA tends to throw out.
And it's going to be written so that, the, the, the nature of people in business is to get their message, if you're going to be on a sign like that, I want mine to stand out more than yours. And that becomes a problem. Whether it's size, letter sizing, my color is pizzazz and yours isn't, I mean-
But even like Town Square, if they wanted to erect a huge pole in the center of Town Square on their property and put up a big sign that says Town Square here, I don't know if we could stop them.
Yeah.
Like south of the border, you know?
Yeah.
Right, because we have no regulations as to maximum height or anything today. We don't have nothing.
Yeah, I think what Bill has here is what's doable for us now.
Now.
But we need the branding, we need the hierarchy, we need all that to really figure out font size and all this other stuff.
Right.
Right. I, I did stick in a statement as we go on later that essentially says along the lines, if the town developed the standard, the selectmen can force you to adopt it as part of the approval. But not having a standard, what are we gonna do?
But everything else up from now till, and, and there's maybe no other way to do it, but everything else from now till then is grandfathered in, right?
Well, no. I'm placing more restrictions, a few more restrictions on the size of signs and locations. You can't, you can only have a directional sign at, at the intersection of arterial roads. You cannot have a directional sign sticking on the corner of River Road.
But all, all signs today.
It's not on arterial road.
All signs today would be grandfathered.
Unless you change it. Right.
Unless you change it.
Right. Yeah, absolutely. Anything existing today is grandfathered.
My, my feeling is that Bill deals with these signs all the time, this is selectmen, cause you approve them. So you know what the problems are.
Well, it was only when I read the regulations be, with Roper Real Estate that I realized, I think the ZBA actually made the correct decision when you read the wording that was in there.
Right.
I, I think they did it correctly. They said you never defined what an intersection was. No ifs.
Right.
You know? So all I did was try to add some.
Language.
Some additional language, but it does not solve, if we want, if we wanna have as a goal all directional signs to have the same look and feel, these regulations aren't, don't deal with that at all.
But it's a star.
Unless you have that study and come up with a standard.
But it, this is a needed star.
If, so if we come up with a standard and adopt it, I think we might be able to enforce it.
Right.
And I think we should work through. And I think we should work towards that. But for now, I would recommend that we go with the ten wide and twenty.
Ten by twenty and how high off the grade? The height off the grade.
You've got a lot for the snow buildup.
Well, you make a ten by twenty foot sign and you put it up on five foot posts.
Well, I, in my mind.
You're not gonna stick it on the ground.
No, in my mind, the twenty foot is the top of the sign.
So you wanna make the top of the sign, no more than twenty feet off the grade.
No more than twenty foot off the grade.
Cause you're gonna have snow bags.
How about the rest of you? Anybody okay with that?
I kinda like what Bill had originally. I mean, I know we can't mandate according to what's existing. But I, I think we literally need to take a field trip and a tape measure and see what we're talking about here.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
Sitting in a room, it's impossible to really know, for a car traveling at thirty, forty miles a long, for them to be able to see things clearly, we can't go too small. Uh, why don't we just, I, I don't think this is, if anything, I think the business signs are a little on the small size, but I think the twelve by twenty-four.
I, I've heard that argument, the, the, for instance, the one by the golf course.
Yes.
That maybe that one's too small.
Right. I think it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I go by it every time, go to the problem. I go, who can read this at this distance?
But they can make it.
Yeah.
Well, what is this, do we know what the size of that one is right now?
No, I didn't measure that one.
But I mean, that's.
It's not that big.
If we can agree, if we can agree with the wording except for the dimensions, can we agree with the wording except for the dimensions? Just to move this forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause the other one in here is that no sign attached to the, to a building will be higher than the drip edge of the roof.
Right.
Cause the next thing, the next thing that's gonna happen is we're gonna, we're gonna have a public hearing with this. So all we do is have to come up with the dimensions before the public hearing.
For the hearing.
And even at the public hearing, we can change them again.
Okay.
So I would, uh.
So you want me to change it now to ten by twenty and twenty?
Why don't we leave it like this?
Or leave it alone?
And then we need to, yeah.
Leave it alone?
Yeah.
All right.
I'm thinking if we were, if, if we had a committee to go out and measure them, we could change it right now.
All right.
And then we got another shot at the public hearing.
Getting to Ray's point about height versus width, do, do we care if it's wider or higher?
Yeah, I don't think we want a twenty-four foot wide and twelve foot high.
Oh, God.
No.
I don't think so.
It look like a railroad car.
That's what I'm asking.
So I think we should.
I have no idea.
That's, that's why we need to measure it and go around.
I mean, if somebody owns a business, isn't gonna do something stupid.
Yeah.
But if you put twelve wide and twenty.
Really, huh?
Anyway. But I think we can agree on the words.
All right. Well, let's move on and we'll, 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 we'll try to go out and measure some more.
Okay.
Uh, section three, the eleven, the four dot six dot one, this is, uh, this deals with new development signs. Go ahead.
Just to back up, just to back up. Who's gonna go out and measure?
Well, I, I'll go measure.
I'll go measure.
Okay. Anybody else?
Which one would you like, which one do you think is about, uh?
I'll measure.
I'm gonna drive around and take a look at it and see, you know, find out which ones are, which ones seem okay and then, uh, big enough.
Yeah. I gotta take a measure, I think.
See if we can come up with, uh, I, I'd say do it individually and, uh, come back with some.
Maybe have an idea if, so you're gonna go around looking.
Three, three, you go, go out and measure them and email us your suggestions.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, we may see one that, some, we all, whether independently or wherever, say, you know, this is a great size right here. This would work for everything.
Cause we're just trying to move this to the public hearing at this point. Okay.
Just open up your shot, measure all the signs.
All right. Now, moving along here. Section three, five, one, one, four, six, one. What I did was I changed the word, and I'll tell you what it is. It reads now, as new developments are started, developers may wish to erect signage to market the new properties, is the way it now reads. And I, I propose to change that to identify.
I agree. I agree.
It's a good idea.
I'm not so sure we wanna suggest that, that, that the goal of these, this section is to allow you to market the property.
Yeah.
And you get one sign, the rest is the same. Now, go down to the section three, five, one, one, four, six, three on the bottom. Even though I didn't change this, I think it's important that you read this. Um, it says a new development sign will have maximum dimensions of more than three by three. This is existing regulations. Top of the sign will not be more than six feet above. And it says that a new development may include only the project name, a graphic or design, developer name, marketing and/or real estate agent name and agent phone number. Now, the reason is, I didn't change this, but I sensed in the last time we talked, there were some people that would propose eliminating some of these categories.
Yeah, the real estate.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree.
That's a great one.
Yeah.
Can, can, it, would it be all right if we said the marketing agent? And that agent's telephone number, would that be allowed?
Would, would Waterville Company be a marketing agent?
I have no idea what a marketing agent is. To me, they're gonna stick the real estate developer in there.
What if, what if we just put a number down and don't list marketing or slash real estate? And you just put a number down and let them figure it out.
You're gonna have a number and, and not know you call.
Yeah. I mean, I think marketing is real estate, basically.
Well, can a developer have a telephone number?
Yeah, the developer's name and developer's telephone number?
That's good enough.
Yeah. But I think marketing and real estate go hand in hand.
Do we have consensus on that? I'll change that again.
The whole idea is for deliveries, so if somebody's got a delivery, they wanna know who the developer is and the caller.
Right.
And that way it wouldn't be a for sale sign.
Right, it's a developer name and phone number.
Okay. Moving on. The next one. I changed this to read that a new development sign may be erected and maintained until the issuance of half of the occupancy by code.
Yeah, we agreed on that.
Well, no, it's whatever, we still, we haven't agreed, you know, we haven't voted anything yet. We talked about it.
Well, we talked about it.
Or, um, or, or there's another where the sub divider improvement agreement is, that, that's in a case where it's just land, where they're not dealing with, you know, where like Moose Run. Um, that didn't change.
How would you, I hate to keep doing this, but how do you, Green Peaks, another, another three condo complex, what's half built?
Half built is more than one.
Okay.
I was thinking, uh, maybe just using the phrase more than half. Because if there's an odd number.
Suppose there's four. So he gets two, doesn't qualify?
Then he wouldn't qualify until he got the third one.
Until he gets the three?
No.
So I don't know.
Well, it's whatever you wanna do.
Well, if you say half and you get built a three, then you gotta, if, if, if it's two.
If it's three, he's gonna have to have two.
Yeah.
What if you've got a development that is twelve units broken up into four phases?
Well, and that could happen at Green Peaks on the outside of the road, right?
If, I think if they, if, as long, then, then I, I would think that you're allowed to have this sign until half of the twelve.
But usually the phase development, you, you know, they come in with the approval for the whole twelve, and then you come in with approval for three and three and three, so.
You agree.
I think it depends on will be approved, be the way I answer the question.
So what if you have like a condo tell built with forty units, you're saying, so for that whole time, for the first twenty to sell, this sign can be.
You got it.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Do you think that's too much money?
I don't know. It, it just, if we can't have for sale signs up for residences, I don't see, I, I think it crosses a line, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the, the dilemma is then, we, you know, again, we have a history of always allowing developments like, new developments like this to have had signs.
Right.
And, and we, we'll have a public hearing on this, but I mean, but there's something to be said in the case of somebody not even able to put a sign up that he's got something under development is pretty tough.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that.
I mean, how, how do people know? I mean, I, I mean, you know, but I'd like to, I'd be curious to what the developers say.
They know through the advertising, they go to the kiosks, you know, just, I, I still relate it to an existing structure that someone is trying to sell.
Yeah.
I mean, they're limited and, uh.
Right.
Kinda makes you wonder why, I suppose you could look at it and say, well, the developer's bringing more money into town and therefore there's an exception, you should, he should be given a, uh, an advantage. But is that really, I don't wanna use the term fair, cause I don't like to use that, but, uh, I believe that's a deliberate, but, uh, is it reasonable? Is, is it reasonable to provide them with the advantage? Maybe it is. Maybe it is. I mean, I think limiting it to the developer and not saying, the real estate agent, not saying for sale or anything like that is reasonable. I think that that, and even if the developer's name was there for the twenty-one units, it's not really, not, not a huge sign. And it's, it's kind of like the person's name on the, on the door, you know, it's identifying who it is.
Yeah.
So I don't really have much of a problem with that. I, I think that that might be all right.
You know, um, a lot of times the real estate offices will have a plastic box with specific information about the property
Yes, yes. Right.
on their signs. Is that going to be allowed if, since there's no real estate agent or?
That's a bit.
Um, as long as it's not, they could put it on the back of the sign. As long as it's not visible from the road, from a journey property, they, they could do it.
That's, that's gonna be all over town.
It's not a sign.
But do it, does it have to be spoken in black and white on this?
Well, we were, no, we basically already said that if you wanna erect, the definition of sign in here is very broad. I mean, it includes basically anything that might have a letter on it. And, and essentially says if, if, if it's visible, it's regulated. If it's not visible, it's not regulated. So if you put a, a, a box on the back of a sign that was information on this property, I think as long as that box is not visible for somebody reasonably driving by, it would be allowed.
You mean like the love pamphlets and the stuff?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that stuff end up before a rainstorm all over town?
Well, it might very well. So that's why we have to, if you wanna prohibit it, we should prohibit it.
I, I agree with Ray. I agree. It lists that the property's for sale.
Yeah, we just stop doing that.
Something that we just didn't want to have as part of that. So we're kind of contradicting ourselves here with regards to that.
And this is a really good value. So maybe we need to prohibit it.
Well, I'm sympathetic to the developers who were saying, look, you know, you, you know, I'm making an investment here. You gotta give me a chance to sell the damn thing.
Yeah.
You can't prohibit me from selling it. I mean.
But if you're, if you're the owner of an existing property who has it on the market, a person drives into town, developer has the, uh, the ability to say, look at my development, come on and take a look at it. The owner doesn't. Which way is that guy gonna turn? He's gonna go with that.
That's right.
Well, I, I'm assuming the reason this is, you know, I gotta take a very joined this view here, that, that this section of the regulations was written by the, by the realis, by the, the real estate people.
That's a good point, yeah.
They were the only real estate agent and they didn't want properties listed because in order to find property, you had to go to them.
True.
Or to sell it, you know? I mean, you could look at it, if you wanna have for sale by owner in this town, what do you do? You're screwed.
Yeah.
Well, there are, I mean, we got into this with, we got into this with Margaret, right?
You put it on the bulletin board. Yeah.
She wanted to have an open house. So what is a sales agent? Now, there were some people that actually came in and argued that a sales agent had to be a licensed real estate broker. I think we took a definition that if Margaret wanted to sit on her property, she could have a for sale sign. You know, she could have an open house sign. I, I, it's not unreasonable, right?
No, you, you're right. That's a good point.
There's, there is a difference though between developing a property and the builders building the property and another entity, even if, some cases it may, could be the same, but another entity, um, selling the property. I mean, they're two different things. If, if you build a project and you're gonna just say who the developer is, then go to the developer and talk to them about what you wanna do. Who's selling it? What's going on? It's not a single family, this is for sale right now. This, it's a development.
Right.
What do you get? The other side of Bill's point is though, there's only one marketing agent that has land to develop. So that puts them.
That's why.
That puts them in a huge, uh.
Hello, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but typically if you're driving around and you see a development sign, just normally, most of the normal people would, then next would look for a real estate office and ask about the development. That's typically what would happen. So I, I, I think that, uh, I think just the developer's name and phone number.
Yeah.
And then you can always call the developers, you say, well, call my agent over here and such and such. It, it gives that, it gives the advantage that, uh, that there, helps them because they're investing in, in the area here and so forth. But it doesn't give them such a great advantage that it still is a little bit of advantage over an existing property. Not over, overly zealous. So I would say probably, you, because we have eliminated the sales agent and all that. We've got it, we've decided it's going down to just the developer name and number right now.
Right, right.
Then I would say at this point, that's why.
Yeah, I, I think that's the way to go.
Okay, what's next?
Okay, moving on. Uh, open house signs, uh, we say basically you're allowed to have one on the property and maximum of two directional signs to, to, to help people find out where the property is. Right now, there are no guidelines as to how many you're allowed to have.
So, Bill, can I ask a question? So if I decide to have an open house at my house and I sit on my property, am I allowed to, even though I'm not a licensed agent, am I allowed to put up open house signs for people to come and find me?
If, if you, our definition would be if you were selling it privately.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you are the licensed agent, you're allowed to sell your own property, you're there, somebody makes you an offer, you can accept it.
Okay.
You're an agent.
So we're allowed to put those open house signs, let's say for.
If, on a self-sale.
On a self-sale.
But you have to physically be there that day.
Yes.
Yeah, right.
And you can't make up your, your own handmade open house sign.
Sure you can. Absolutely. That's what we love to do. Cardboard, people kinda scribble on them and.
You can?
You gotta get, you gotta get approval from these guys still.
Yeah, yeah.
They have to, real estate agencies have to get approval, what, a day before?
Yeah.
To put their signs up. What makes it any different?
Yes, but they're kinda printed in a little way.
Same rule. And you had to pay, you had to pay. You don't get a permit for nothing.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's income for the town, too.
I just go take one of those other signs that's out there and redirect it.
People have tried that too.
Yeah, no kidding, huh?
So moving on, the next change that I was proposed on the temporary signs. And I was suppo- proposing adding a sentence here that specifically says temporary signs advertising contractors involved in remodeling of existing properties are prohibited.
I get, I agree.
So we can't put a plumber sign up for, um, you know.
Yeah.
No, they gotta park their truck where it's visible.
That, that's what they're doing.
That'd be okay. Uh, now.
Yeah.
The next gets into the category of, there are like banners, flags, decorations, all these special event things.
Can I ask one more question about the, uh?
Absolutely.
Advertising? What about, um, cause you're limiting it here to, uh, remodeling and existing properties.
Yeah.
What about lawn treatment and, uh, stuff like that?
Well, yeah, so you just wanna say, um,
Oil the driveway or something.
That, that temporary signs advertising a contractor?
Or.
Would just take out involved in remodeling.
Yeah, I think, you know, don't be as specific as that and I think it's all right.
Right.
Temporary signs advertising.
Would just say they're prohibited.
Okay.
All right. Bannered flags, outdoor decorations. So maximum size now ten square feet. I don't know what's appropriate here.
Some of them will walk.
So think of this as the wedding, the, um, you know, the Gordon, you know, the, not the, you know,
Tastin' for Derby.
They, you know, you're gonna have a wedding, gonna have an event on the field or something. How big is that sign? How would you make it?
How big is Tastin' for Derby?
Five by two is ten square feet.
Well, it could be a banner, so that's a problem.
That's not a very large.
No.
You know, you may wanna move that up to twelve.
Any suggestions?
I don't know.
I mean, think about twelve square feet is three by four.
Aren't there banners though, Mark?
Well, five by two.
Yeah, two.
Five by two is.
Ten?
The casting.
What would you guess, Mark, that the school one was?
Four, five.
Well, like the spaghetti supper thing?
No, that, Mark, the...
Our school is number one.
But that one was four.
What was the temporary school banner that became the permanent school banner?
Oh, the school of the year.
How big is that?
Uh, that's probably two feet by six.
Oh, it's bigger than two. No, I, oh, no.
Maybe it's three feet.
Three by six.
I was gonna say it's bigger than two.
Three by six.
I wouldn't even say four by six.
So you wanna make it twenty-five square feet?
That would allow for a twelve foot wide and two foot high. But looking down the road, I mean, one of the things in the SE group is to, you know, enable us to have welcoming banners and picture something twelve by two doesn't seem out of line or is across the road, so...
Any, anything the town chooses to do, just so you know, aren't covered by, are exempted from all these regulations.
But it would be like, say, a wine festival in...
You won't be able to get a twelve by two to cross the road.
No, that's for sure.
But that's a good point. I mean, somebody, somebody wants to, somebody, we're gonna have a wine festival. Or we're gonna have, like, the ones we get, like, the five K race events.
Right, yep.
So somebody wants to, on the day of that event, they wanna come and put a temporary sign up.
Right.
How big?
Yep.
I think they should be able to be big, because it's our whole thing.
Twenty-five? We'll put twenty-five in and then people think about it.
Twenty-five square feet?
We'll take Minnesota again.
You're just saying right there.
The only, the only thing about the square footage is that technically, you could come in, you could have a sign that was...
Twenty-five by one?
Yeah, well, I mean, it just could, they would look at the actual displacement of the sign, you know, it's got all kinds of edges. I mean, it works out well for a rectangular sign, but if you've got a fancy sign that has ins and outs, it can get to be pretty big and still only have...
Let's just square it off, whatever it is, it is.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you know, you put the, you're better off, I think, to put the extreme dimensions.
Yeah.
I, I, the reason I put the twenty-five here, the square footage, is because it's talking about banners and things like that. Sometimes those things are two foot high by ten foot. So, I don't know, I don't know what to do with that.
Well, as long as it's limited to a banner, I guess it's not a problem, because banner would be like a fabric and it would have to be held up.
Well, these are banners, flags, and outdoor decorations.
Yeah.
I, I think you should leave the twenty-five in, think about it, look at different size signs.
Yeah, we'll do the twenty-five.
You know, there's quite a bit of this down in Plymouth. You can just, you know, as you're driving around, look and there are several different examples just along Tenny Mountain Highway.
Cause at the public meeting, we can change his twenty-five to something else.
Absolutely.
Okay.
We've got another shot.
I just don't see the need to have a huge sign on a road that's got a thirty mile an hour speed limit and that the sign is going to be right on the edge of the road.
Because we're excited.
Right.
There you go.
We're talking about banners, we're talking about events, yay, they're gonna sign more money.
So now we get into the category of business signs. Business signs are permitted and most of what we're talking about here is on the business's property. So this is a sign on their property. We're saying they can have, there may be a freestanding and one facade sign and then it gives an exception if there's multiple entrances, you can have two. Size of the sign, limited to four by eight, thirty-two square feet. But you get into, again, you go to Town Square, they're, they're, I went and looked at those, they're like, they're...
They're, they're long.
Yeah, they're three foot by ten foot.
Are you talking about the Town Square business signs?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the ones like on Hot Valleys, the ones that are hanging on the building.
Yeah, they're three feet deep.
I don't know what they are, I had to climb up there and measure them.
Probably just about thirty-two square feet, I would imagine they probably are.
But they need, they need to be, that's what I'm saying, well, you have to be able to read them from a distance.
Well, there's no problem, I don't think, with a thirty-two square feet, I think that's what I've been saying, I mean, it's relatively standard.
I still say, I'm gonna take that conference center and measure it, cause I think the change panel sign involved in that whole big sign, I mean, or maybe it boils down to how we measure. Are we just measuring what wording they wanna put on and not measuring change panel beneath it, or?
Well, doesn't Valley Inn have change panel too? Yeah, Valley Inn has a change panel.
That's why I put the overall in, cause I didn't wanna get into having to struggle with...
Right.
A sign, a panel sign can start out as your basic dimensions that you're allowing and as a panel gets added, it'll below, it can become larger.
Yeah.
Well, again, I think it depends on what we find out when we go.
Yeah, measure, measure.
All right, moving along. So thirty-two square foot is what they'll start with. The other change I made is they can't extend above the drip edge of the roof line. Rather than the, so if you've got one hanging on a building, you can't get up above the drip edge of the roof. Now, I know you're gonna ask me, what happens if you've got multiple edges? I don't know.
It's wherever the sign is.
Right, I think it's wherever the sign is, right? Good point.
Now, when you, you're talking your drip edge, I mean, I might define a drip edge differently than you would.
I hope not. Isn't that the edge of the roof, or what do you call the edge of the roof?
Well, the gable ends, see the gable end of the building?
Ga- gable...
Do you call the edge of the roof the drip edge? See, I would call it the drip edge.
I called the drip edge, even on a gable end building, you can't be higher than those with the edge, yeah.
So even on the gable end...
You can't put a triangle up in that gable.
And then that would be the drip edge, correct? Yeah, okay, just so we're all on the same page.
What's the other word for that? A soffit?
Soffit, fascia, yes.
Yeah, fascia.
Soffit, does that make more sense?
Well, no, cause I think, I think Bill, Bill and I both had the idea of what the drip edge was. With a soffit, it could go up the gable.
Yeah, okay, oh, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what you do.
What about the fascia?
Basically, I think we start out by telling them, no, can't you get the sign a little lower than sticking in the gable?
No.
On the, on the...
So drip edge?
I wouldn't call it a drip edge on the edge of the gable, no. Cause the water runs down and it's awesome.
All right.
It's the lowest part of the roof?
Well, the...
Well, I see if you say lowest part of the roof, then you get into dormers or something.
No, no, I'm saying, I think what you got is right.
Okay.
I think it's correct.
All right, so we're gonna go to the section on twelve-five. All businesses shall conform to the character of the town. And then below that, I added a whole nother paragraph about off-premise directional signs. They are allowed for businesses and events and off-premise informational signs are permitted.
What does that mean?
You gotta...
Well, it's the example, we would permit someone to have an informational sign. Remember, the definition of informational sign, it just states facts. So we're saying you can have a bus stop sign, you know, or something like that, off, off, not, you know, on other than your own property. The only other example other than bus stops that I can come up with would be if we wanted to put the home of freestyle skiing, that's an informational sign, that's a fact, states a fact. We would allow that off-premise.
What do we call, Bill, those A-frame type of informational slotted, you could...
Like the temporary things?
Temporary thing, yeah, we used it...
I don't even know.
Outside of Coyote.
Well, I used it at the school too, at one point.
It's a sandwich board?
Thank you, sandwich board, yeah.
On your property, it's, it becomes an event, temporary event sign? As long as it's on your property, you could do a great deal.
Well, we did that fundraiser, remember, we moved it from Coyote over to the left.
But they can't, they're not supposed to take a sandwich board type of thing. And let's say it's a special event, like we're gonna have a ski sale or something. They can't go stick that on the highway right away unless they get a permit. And then that would become a directional sign to an event and they'd have to meet the rules of a directional sign to an event.
Okay, okay.
So recently, the Coyote put out a sandwich board at the Athletic Center.
On whose property?
Athletic Center.
On the Athletic Center's property.
Probably it's okay as long as they applied for a permit, did they?
No.
No, they never, they never do.
Right, so let's say, but, but this was a change panel board.
Yep.
Where they said, you know, come in for our burger special or whatever it was.
Temporary sign?
Well, but, but they put it out every weekend. It's a temporary sign which they put out every, every week.
You know, I don't know, I gather if, if we, as the Board of Selectmen found that objection, well, we could tell them, you gotta stop doing that or you gotta apply for a permit.
Well, we have to apply for a permit anyway, we told them that they couldn't use it without applying for a permit.
You have told them that?
Are they still putting it out? Cause I, I have not seen it.
We're in cold weather now.
I have seen it, I've seen it like once, once or twice, but, and then I was guilty of using it for the function that...
It was a town thing, we never found rules.
We don't have to find rules, it's a town thing.
Oh, that's right. Well, I used it.
I'm a town.
So here, let's go on to off-premise directional signs. And under that, we're allowing informational signs as well as off-premise directional signs for business and events. And there are some rules. They must be located at town arterial road intersections. See, that's the only place you can put these kinds of signs, you can't put them any other place. The cost of erecting one of these things will be the responsibility of the applicant. Now, we can go back and revisit this if, if when we get done with this other study, we, the town wants to start to own all these signs, then it's a whole nother matter. But right now, I'm saying you gotta pay the cost of doing them. The Board of Selectmen reserves the right to establish a look, a common look for all off-premises signs and reject any application that does not conform to that standard. So it's, if we had a standard, it's saying you gotta look like the standard.
Right, yeah.
And, and once a directional sign is established, the business that constructed the sign may not restrict another business from attaching a sign to it as long as it conforms to other requirements of this regulation. So you can't prohibit someone else from hanging one below yours.
I think they need to change the word then, from a new business or event to another business or event.
And...
Well, I specifically wrestle with that and I'll give you my logic for why I started with new business. Because then you're gonna get into this, there are four businesses, right? So the one guy says, you know, we need a directional sign. Okay. The other three guys say, screw you, we don't wanna do the directional sign. So the one guy says, okay, I put it up and then the other three guys are gonna run over and say, I can attach my sign to it for free? And I'm saying, and that's why I came up with new.
That's not a bad logic.
But Bill, in, in here, the way, if you don't use the word new, the guy that originally built that sign you're talking about owns that sign.
No, he doesn't. Well, he does, yes.
He owns the sign, he's gotta conform to rules and regs.
It's on, it's not on his property now, this is a sign that's basically on the town right away.
That's where you control the look and the size, but the cost is, was borne by the original owner. I would think the owner then can say, or maybe we need language, I don't know, I guess you can't do that in business as a town. But I would say he has the right to charge somebody and say, yeah, you can do it, but I want ten bucks a month, I want twenty bucks a month, I don't know.
Well, then we get into the problem that what you're gonna get with Roper Real Estate, which is a little bit, okay, then I'm gonna put my own sign up. So now you've got two signs.
But as a selectman, couldn't you say there's, we don't allow that many on a, well, it's only fees or something?
So the guy who owns the sign says, yep, you can hang your little thing beneath mine, I'm gonna charge you twenty, you know, two hundred bucks. The guy says, screw it, I ain't paying the two hundred bucks, I'll put my own sign up. Now, what do the selectmen do? Now we're in the middle of a fight. The reason I put this in here was to say that if it's a new business, just so that you be forewarned, if you're putting up a directional sign, you cannot prohibit others from attaching to your sign once that it's up there.
So go to everybody and try to get an agreement and build it all collectively.
But if a new entity comes along, you know, a new one, you, and he says, ooh, I'd like to put my name up there, you're gonna have to let him. You can't tell him no and you can't charge him.
And this is on town property.
This is on town property, but we made them pay the cost of putting the sign up.
I think the town should have people control the signs, people pay the town.
You could prevent, like, say the scenario came up where the guy said, I'm gonna charge you two hundred dollars if you wanna put your sign on it, the sign that I built. The guy says, well, I'm just gonna go down the road and put another one in. Actually, the town would say, no, you can't do that.
You can't do that now because it has to be at the arterial intersection. But, but it does, nowhere's in, as I've written them right now, I, cause I can envision the point where the whole sign fills up.
Right.
Or somebody just wants to put a temporary one up and there isn't room to hang a little panel under there like Theater Under the Stars. And they just wanna put a temporary one along the side of it for the summer? That doesn't seem to be unreasonable, right?
Doesn't mean the skate park can come and stick out a sign up there for their summer venture? I mean, you gotta look at, or the tennis program or BBTs.
Now, they're, you know, they're, could they? They're, they're not in the business complex, I don't think, they're across the street from the business complex. Can they put up a sign that says skateboard park? Probably could.
Well, is Theater Under the Stars in the business complex? Not really.
No, it's over in the field.
Yeah, so, you know?
I think that if you get to the point where the sign is getting too crowded, that means there's too much individuality and that's when you start grouping them together and say restaurants this way, shops that way. And then as you get close to the individual business, then you start separating them out.
Then you separate them.
And that's where this hierarchy, I think, I think groups them.
Exactly.
We need a new set of standards.
I still have a problem in my mind about saying a new business, you can't stop a new business from going on your sign, but you can stop a secondary business that decides later on, he wants to be part of your sign.
Well, I wrote it as a new business, you can do whatever you want.
I mean, everybody either has to write or everybody shouldn't, I don't know.
It seems like a can of worms, I'm leaning towards maybe Cindy was hinting, the town really should own and control the sign.
I think the town should control the signs, people have to pay the town. The town is in control of what the signs are gonna look like and people have to pay an annual fee.
I don't have a problem with that, but we have to write all those rules and regulations. And we don't, we're nowhere near having enough to be able to do that.
Oh, agreed, yeah, 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 agreed.
I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying.
I think that should be the goal, especially when the branding comes down and all of that stuff, that people come into this area, see Waterville Valley, I mean, everything's kinda, kinda like, kinda love the same, control.
And I think Terry's right, too. I mean, I agree with what Terry said, your initial sign, restaurants and shops, whatever way they go. And then when you get closer to where you are, then you can have Black Bear this way, Snowy Owl and whatnot, but not all over the place.
Yeah, and I, I like the, a new business wording, cause there's a real life example that's go, has been going on. You probably all noticed that where the Conference Center and Lodges sign is, that the North Star Inn was left off and that was intentional because at the time, they knew that there was, even the two years ago bankruptcy pending and didn't wanna borrow a sign with someone, yeah, who was gonna be going under and then the sign would be partially obsolete. But if it changes ownership or when it, whatever happens with it and becomes a newer invigorated business, then it oughta be allowed to be on the sign, so I think that kinda makes sense.
Yeah.
Yep.
So what do you wanna do here?
Well, I don't think you can, I don't think you can preclude the existing businesses because that situation, they're there, they may not have put the sign up, but if you're gonna let a new guy come in and put a sign up...
I'll take the word new out, I have no problem with that, you know, whatever you want, okay? There we go. Moving on, we can still change this. Off-premises signs for other than a business complex. So those, that's the rules that apply to a business complex, which is essentially Town Square. It says, in addition to on-premises signs, local businesses may list their business name on a shared directional sign located at the nearest town arterial road intersection. So they can put their name underneath a sign that's already there. And, and I said here, a business is limited to two directional signs. Now, I don't know, two sounded, one sounded, you need maybe more than one, but you shouldn't need more than two, right?
Where are you thinking of these signs being placed when you say those?
Their major arterial, it's arterial intersection. So all we're talking about here is the intersections, intersections such as, you know, Triple I Road and Route forty-nine, that's an arterial road intersection. We've got about six or seven places. Other than that?
Yep.
You ain't got them.
Yep.
Two or just one? How many directional signs?
Well, if you're gonna...
How many signs does it take to find Town Square?
But there...
Two.
Two.
Two. I, I would argue we need one at the entrance to town, which maybe isn't a major arterial, well, it'd count for the I, I guess triple I, that's true, okay.
It is. Yeah, it's triple I.
That would be one.
At the entrance to the road and where you turn.
Right.
The junction, yeah.
That's true.
Two.
Two's enough anywhere, anywhere in the valley, two's enough. Except against the house.
True.
One up.
All right, and then we already talked about the, that off-premise signs for business complexes are restricted to directional signs for the entire complex. And they may list amenities, but not specific business names. Now, that's the current regulation. You get two of these as well. Off-premise signs for events. Temporary directional signs are permitted for events. They should be added to existing directional signs if at all possible, but in the event a directional sign can't be added, the maximum size is two by a foot and a half.
Bill, why, why should the, um, business, in a business complex, be not allowed to put their name on a sign if an individual is? In other words, you've got a sign up here at a major intersection and just because one business is in a complex, it just has to say restaurants and point that way, but then there's one...
It's great point of view and I don't understand, that's the way the current regulations are written.
I don't think it should be that way. I think that it should, I think all the directional signs should be anonymous or, you know, category, a class, you know, type of business. Until you get, until they get right to where the property is and then the name is there.
Does that work for a lodge? Think about it now, does that work for the Black Bear Lodge? That, that the lot, that we simply said lodge? Lodges, that's it? The directional sign says lodges, well, every intersection, we're gonna have a sign that says lodges.
Cause a previous one has to change.
Because lodges, there's lodges all over the place.
That's true, yeah.
If you can't list Black Bear specifically, I think that's why they did it.[1778.32]
Yeah.
I mean, the intent is to, so people aren't confused.
Right.
Unless you could limit it to the last, the last intersection prior to where the business is.
Uh, yeah, some, I think some things to think about. I struggle with the same thing, Terry, I don't have an answer. I mean, why, why can't Dreams and Visions have, put their name out on that sign?
Because if everybody did, we'd have this...
Because the rules are written that they can't.
But we'd have this big sign that no one can read. I mean, I think everyone acknowledges that from the beginning.
All the more reason to try to limit the number of signs, and you will limit the number of signs remarkably if you do just have the category for the
Right.
Exactly.
For the outer signs until you get closer into it.
But it doesn't work well with lodges.
No, you may be right, because they're coming in very...
Lodges and restaurants, the problem, well, it does work with restaurants now, 'cause we don't have any. But if we actually had, that would be confusing.
But Dreams and Visions is a nice place, but I don't think anybody drives from Nashua to go to Dreams and Visions. But someone that drives from Nashua would be coming in looking for Black Bear Lodge.
Black Bear Lodge, yeah.
And a shopping cart, yeah.
A place where they're gonna be staying, so there is a difference, I think.
Yeah, oh, yeah, truly.
Yeah.
Or the convention center.
Right.
Well, mostly the places to stay, I think Bill's right. I think it's the...
Yeah, but the conference center is huge, so...
Well, conference center, people would make them, yeah, but... But not for a restaurant or store, or a small...
Right, well, in particular, yeah.
Well, you get into... The Coyote Grill is allowed, well, now it's, that's on their property. They got a business sign up, they're allowed to have a business sign.
Yeah, we're talking directional signs here in particular.
Yeah, and, and I, we could take a shot at trying to make this more restrictive, but I don't know. I mean, we could say with the exception of lodges, there will be, you know, businesses cannot be named, so like real estate, it would just be real estate offices?
Yeah.
So how would you find the valley one versus Roper?
You just have to follow the sign until you've got to where it was.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not...
They don't really need a directional sign.
They gotta...
I mean, it's not like this is a maid up here in the valley.
Yeah.
Once, once you've done the loop once, you get a pretty good idea where you're gonna go.
Not if you're coming in at nine o'clock.
Yeah, right.
And then I'm looking for real estate.
Well, but then they still can't find them.
I'll tell you, the one that struck me was the guy, one time he came in, and this is where this can get confusing. Is, I had a friend of mine who, we drove in here from one of those Gordon conferences. So he arrives on Sunday night at about ten o'clock at night, it's dark, he drove over Triple I Road out of the valley before, because the first sign says lodging. And it sends him down our Triple I Road. Now, is, and he, you know, just turned and kept going straight.
Then we have to put a sign to the edges of town. Don't go any further.
He was looking for Golden Eagle Lodge or something, you know.
How did he get out to Triple I?
Because the first sign you hit when you come into town sent him that way.
The access road?
Yeah, the mountain access road. Sent him up the mountain access road. He got up and he turned on Triple I and didn't realize they're just supposed to turn right at the bridge, just went straight into the forest.
Yeah.
Never heard from him again.
Time for new friends, though.
In, in this...
I said, now here's a guy that's got a PhD in fourteen subjects, and he's, that's stupid.
They usually are. Sorry.
You're on camera.
I am.
Well, it's two by one and a half. One of them's a little square feet, one's a small.
That's very small.
Feet every place else.
I, I, I literally thought about, do we want those Gordon conference signs? This is directional now. Gordon conference, any bigger than just a little bitty thing?
Yeah, but I'm just saying, every place else we've talked about is square footage rather than...
Oh, I'm okay with square footage. What do you wanna?
I don't know.
What's one and a half by two? Three?
Four says four, three, but I say four. It seems like four seems...
Four square feet?
I mean, just to be consistent with...
Sure.
With other places.
Informational signs can be consistent with the character valid, conform to rules of off-premise signs, the content of any informational sign is subject to the approval by the board of selectmen. So you wanna put up an informational sign that basically says, if we don't like your message, you don't get it. Then we go on, there's two other categories, political.
Yeah.
This is state. All I did was take the state regulations, and that's all, basically you gotta conform to the state. Freedom of expression, we have the attorney looking at this. I have no idea if we're gonna be able to write anything at all. I suspect not, but I think the attorney's gonna say you can't write back.
With the political sign, is what required by a permit?
No.
So they don't even need to tell anybody they're putting one up?
You have to ask permission with somebody's property, that's it.
Well, I mean, it could be blocking something, or it could be a safety issue, or do you just discover that after the fact? I'm just, it's just, I'm just asking.
Their state law, basically, the way state law reads is they're, they are permitted on state highway, right of ways. So, so you could put political signs up and down Route forty-nine, right? But once you get to the edge of town, they're not permitted on public property. They are permitted on private property, no permits. And there are a whole bunch of rules about when you have to have them down by. And if you put it up illegally, I don't know who, I guess there's sign police in the state, you can get fined up to ten thousand dollars if you put a sign in and didn't have permission. So if you put a political sign, like, we had, remember we had Kelly A. out this summer and they spread signs all over the place, that clearly was a violation of state law. First of all, you can only put, I think you're only supposed to put them up at the time of the event. You can't just stick the signs up.
Yeah, they were all along this valley road.
Right. Now, they were okay, I think, on a state highway, that's not our business, but once you got in the valley, I don't think they were allowed. All right, well, I'll make these changes and...
Okay, so I'll...
I have one question to raise about the number of directional signs at any given intersection. Is that gonna be unlimited? And might that not cause confusion again?
Uh... Yeah. What, and you get down to, I don't know what that say, particularly when you get, when, you know, somebody's got an event and wants to put up a little sign that says this way to the, you know, ski sale, it's tempered.
I'm less concerned about the temporary ones, I'm more concerned about, um, businesses having this disagreement and putting up individual...
I think they get it, so I reckon we're gonna get into...
Suppose you run out of room, we can allow a second one?
I remember, I mean, yeah, I guess if they run out of room, you have to.
Right.
I, I wouldn't be surprised if, as we're hashing it all out, we find like, maybe we find creative ways to group things, or, I, I kinda think as we hash things out with the branding and creating a hierarchy, that hopefully it'll all come out and launch.
I mean, I can envision that down the road, more businesses come in, maybe another hotel, and we'd have the need for more signs to advertise more businesses, but...
The only thing that's gonna make sense is a lot of town, the media.
But we don't wanna it to just be arbitrary, arbitrary, they just, because people want their own signs.
Town comes the owner of the signs, and does the controlling.
Right. I think that's true.
I agree.
I think, I think, and we're gonna get there.
Yeah, but, but, but... But think about it, it's not gonna eliminate the argument, you know, because the town can't discriminate. I mean, we can't say your business is acceptable on our sign, your business is not. If it could, you're gonna have to write rules.
But then you could, you, you, as a town, you, you own it, you could probably change the size of that particular sign because of one particular problem that grew that way.
Right.
As opposed to, you know, now.
But if we're gonna allow directional signs that, you know, point the direction of one business, you can't allow it for one business and not for another business. I don't think so.
Or we find a way to creatively group the lodges, 'cause I, I would imagine that would be our biggest growth area, you know?
Right.
And, and maybe, although it would necessarily be a building complex, find a way to group the ones that the first term, or first turn is one group of lodges, the second, you know, and that they would have to communicate that to their guests. I think something like that oughta come up.
True.
Yeah.
Well, I think for twenty fifteen, this is about as what we're gonna get, so I'm gonna make a motion that we approve this and move it to a public hearing in December.
Approve it with changes, right?
All we're doing is approving, forward this to a public hearing, right? We're not actually approving these, or are we?
'Cause we're still gonna go look at...
I guess what I'm approving is if you move it forward to...
That we move it forward to a public hearing? I don't know. Do, 'cause, or do we have to approve it and then amend it later on? I don't know the technical...
Mark might come back down.
Yeah, someone go on, we'll ask him that question. It's a legal thing, you have to do.
Essentially, we're gonna move it to December.
Right, through a public hearing.
I guess he's coming back. Okay, so we'll take, that's signs. Now, there's two other things on, that we have handouts on, is the outdoor lighting and the zoning changes. Which one would you like to tap? The zoning?
I don't know enough about lighting.
Well, I went through it, I got some, I got suggestions, but I, I'll wait till we get that somewhere. Do you wanna do the zoning changes?
Sure.
Okay, so I put together something that is strong here. And I think, let me just go over quickly, I think we need some, couple of definitions on parking spaces, shared and restricted. Multi-family dwellings, I think we need some clarification on that in C one. One in C one. Some clarifications on the shared parking, or, or just putting shared parking into the zoning notes. Lodges and at the multiple, multiple family dwellings. Need a multi, multiple, multi-family dwellings. Originally, when we created C one, we wanted really high density and not these triplexes. So I'm proposing a change that there gotta be twelve or more units per building are allowed in C one. And I'm thinking really, really, when I, when I say that, I'm really thinking two stories high, stacking them, rather than using up a lot of ground space. And I'm saying, this special zone adjacent and facing Snow's Mountain Road may contain two to eleven multi, multi-family dwellings. That would allow Green Peaks to continue with their development. So that would be a special zone.
Well, except that you're saying, I'm sorry, I had, maybe I haven't processed it, but may contain two to eleven multi-family dwellings, but we're defining multi-family dwellings as containing twelve or more units per building?
Uh, I'm sorry?
The use of multi-family dwellings in the special zone, I think it's confusing, because above, you're saying multi-family dwellings containing twelve or more units are allowed in C one, and a special zone, am I just being, am I just being dense? May contain two to eleven?
The special zone, I think, is gonna have to go, we're gonna get into another discussion, because the, the special zone for
Do we need to approve this?
BBTS looks like it's in C one. Well, I'm, I'm gonna suggest in the zoning, we make a special section that's just for special zones. 'Cause we've got two special zones right now, we've got Carpins Pond, and we've got BBTS, yeah. So I'm suggesting a third special zone, and that would be adjacent to and facing Snow's Mountain Road.
Do we need to specify the size, or how do we, how do we say where is...
Well, I'm, you know, I'm not a wordsmith, I'm just trying to capture the ideas. Why do you hear? We, we voted to move the signage to the December meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Are we, are we really accepting this change? That's what I thought.
'Cause we know there are gonna be changes made to that, and I don't know that.
No, we...
Well, we have some, I think, we're gonna change.
We're gonna go off and clarify a couple of things.
Measures.
Like the sign, a couple of dimensions, we may change the dimensions before the December meeting.
Okay, but you have dimensions in there right now?
We have dimensions in here now.
That language has to be available during the public, the pre-hearing notice period?
Oh, right.
You have to have some language
Right, which we will have.
Of what is being, well, but you have to have it, you have to vote on it. You have to vote. This language, we are moving forward to a public hearing.
Can we choose to amend it at the, at the next meeting?
You're supposed to take input, and then if you amend it and just like change one number or something, you probably don't need another public hearing, but if you change, if you make substantial changes, you're supposed to rehear the new language. But that's one reason why you do it in December, because you still have your January meeting that you can do that.
So with the size of a sign?
Well, like I said, I mean, if you go from three square feet to forty square feet, you probably should re-notice that. But if you change it by, you know, we'd have to ask town council their opinion, but you can't substantially change it or change the, the meaning of what you're trying to do without rehearing it.
But we would have time to do that.
You do have time to do that. That's why you do your, typically do your December meeting as your first hearing. But if I remember the, I'll, I'll go upstairs and look at the timeline, but the, your January meeting is very close to the end of holding the public hearing, the last public hearing, so I'll go check that, the...
I think I have it, Mark.
You have that memo?
I think I have it.
I have it. Okay. So, your... No, you have actually until February third for, to hold the final public hearing on amendments to the zoning ordinance, but you gotta hold your first hearing before the twenty, the twentieth of January, so you're, you're okay holding your first hearing in December than you have until February second?
I think we just...
Um, I've got, yeah, I've got them. I've got the changes and I marked them on here, and I think we, the ones we talked about, so, so, marketing real estate agent comes out and developers goes, okay.
Bill, I can make those hand edits into the document and then get it to you.
Right, yep.
I'll send it to all of you, and then you can make sure that it's what you wanna do and...
Yep.
Okay. Go from there.
All right.
Okay.
I think I got it.
Okay, good.
So I think you could vote on it. I mean, I haven't changed anything other than what I've done is, I mean, you want me to go over the specific changes I made? But they're what we just talked about.
I think we have that for you.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion that we move this to December, that the wording has amended to the public hearing in December.
Right.
Second, any discussion? Am I in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Why do you hear, Mark, on that special, special zones?
Yeah.
You know, they, it looks like it's all in C one.
No.
Right now, it, it looks, it appears to be in C one. What if we changed, what if we changed the number from whatever it is that...
Well, let me explain what happened. If you look at the warrant article, we adopted the warrant article to create the Snow's Mountain Special Zoning Area in two thousand eleven, uh, two thousand twelve, I'm sorry, two thousand twelve. We made that, we adopted that, town meeting passed it. We put it in the zoning ordinance, updated the zoning ordinance, and published the zoning ordinance with that paragraph, those paragraphs in the recreation zone, okay? In two thousand thirteen, we made a couple of other changes to the zoning ordinance which were adopted. The document that we used to publish the changes in two thousand thirteen was the wrong document. So it, the rec changes that we made in two thousand twelve got tagged onto the C one zone, they should not have been. They were already in the rec zone.
Okay, it was an administrative...
It was an administrative error. We're gonna go back to the two thousand twelve document, we're gonna put the two thousand thirteen amendments into it, and we're gonna give you a new zoning ordinance, because that's the one we should've been using since town meeting two thousand thirteen.
Does that have to get approved?
No.
I didn't think so.
There's no need to, I'm, you know, unless you were more comfortable doing that, but there's, I have a, I have an email from town council I just got while we've been down here. She said there's no need to put anything on another town meeting order.
Okay, good. Okay, good, that's good.
So we're gonna, it will, and she says it's better for that to be in the rec zone, because it, it applies to the rec zone at Snow's Mountain. So if someone were to look at the... So if someone were to look at the rec zone, it should be there.
Okay, thank you.
And the Cochran's Pond one should be where it is at the C one because that's where it is.
In C one. Okay.
So if you create this new one in V C, it should go in the V C section.
Yeah.
With the one you were just talking about.
Well, if we create this new one, it'd be in C one.
Oh, it'd be in C one also?
Mm-hmm.
No, only in C one.
Okay, then we would have tagged it on to C one.
C one, okay.
All of that is C one, right?
Yeah. What I, what I was putting forward was that originally we had, uh, we wanted high density in C one. That's why we created it.
Yeah.
And what we're getting is multi-family dwellings with triplexes. And I can visualize triplexes filling up the whole C one. So I'm, I'm saying that we create a special zone adjacent and facing the Snow's Mountain Road that may contain two and it's not a multi-family. I know that. Two to eleven, maybe it just should, should say units per dwelling.
Per dwelling.
And that would allow Green Peaks to finish out what they're doing.
Yeah, instead of.
Mm-hmm.
And the rest of C one would have to have twelve or more units or some high density, you know.
Would you wanna say two or three?
It's it.
Instead of two, should it be three?
Well, three would, is a multi-family dwelling and there was some talk about building duplexes because because they could sell them easier. So I thought this kinda throws a, throws them a bone that they could build duplexes along the road. And actually, if you look at C one, you know, just that short area facing Snow's Mountain Road, cause that only goes out to Boulder Path. That kinda puts a frame around C one. So I would, you know, having these lower, lower density right along the edge of that road. I don't see that as too objective, objectionable. It's just that short section.
Are you gonna have a depth or something?
Yeah, so the boundary's gonna be.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I thought about that and, uh, I, I got a, and I'm not a wordsmith, so I don't, and I struggled with that. I thought adjacent and facing Snow's Mountain. I mean, we could actually put a depth so that it would allow it to be two buildings deep, but that's too deep. That really cuts into it significantly.
Well, you could.
So I thought adjacent and facing, that means it's touching the road.
Why couldn't you take the existing depth of Green Peaks now and you, and maybe use that?
I'm, I'm not asking.
Is this extended out?
You're talking Snow's Mountain?
Is that what you're trying to?
Snow's Brook Road.
Snow's Brook Road.
Yeah.
This is stated on here. I mean, I don't know what that depth is, but.
Oh, yes, Snow's Brook Road.
That's Snow's Brook Road. That's not Snow's Mountain Road.
It's Snow's Brook Road. Snow's Mountain.
No, Snow's Mountain Road goes up greatly.
Right, so this says Snow's Mountain here, it should be Snow's Brook.
Right, where it's very, yeah, wrong, which is, yeah.
Oh, it says, oh, okay, I see what you mean. I'm sorry.
Snow's Brook Road, right.
So you're, in effect, you're telling the folks developing Green Peaks that you can have it along the one side, but not facing, like Sol were talking about on-street parking, if they were developed the other side, that's all moot.
It's not too deep. Cause that really chews up a lot of C one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I'm just thought of.
So you're, you're only talking from here to here?
Here?
Except for where there's already buildings.
Well, actually.
Well.
Unless they were to tear it down and re, yeah.
Right, but, but you're really talking from here to here?
Yeah. Are you talking the whole area? Yeah?
No.
Well, I mean, that's what it says. You could.
Is that, is that the texture?
Well, that's what that says if it says Snow's Brook Road.
I mean, you could say Snow's Brook from, from, uh,
The Black Bear Lodge to.
Boulder Path.
To, right.
Or from Osceola Road to Boulder Path?
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah, but then you're eliminating this, you're eliminating this section.
But you have.
You eliminated that.
Right.
So you have to say from Villa, away from Village Road then, right?
From Black Bear to?
No, from Black Bear.
No. From Black Bear, yeah. Yeah, from Black Bear to, uh, Boulder Path.
Cause after that, it's Valley Road, so it wouldn't apply if you use Snow's Brook Road.
Right.
Yeah. So.
But first you gotta agree with the concept of what I'm trying.
That would only allow him maybe to build one more building of three?
Oh, no, it'd be able to fill up a thing.
Yeah, he would build four ways.
To, to Boulder Path?
Sure. That's as far as it went, what he, what he showed us.
Really?
Yeah, and it would allow him to go all the way to, to Black Bear.
Which is.
I think he goes beyond Boulder Path. I think he goes all the way down to.
Yeah, Boulder Path is, uh,
Build, what's the road that goes on the town square?
is almost where the, where, where you are, right?
Yeah, no, no, I'm, um, I'm right opposite the, the Gulf, the, the.
The, the Gulf, uh, Green, the Green.
The eighth, the eighth green. I'm right opposite the eighth green. I think he was planning two units on the other side of me closer to Black Bear. That, that area, I think, is owned for two units. And then he was planning two more buildings of three on the other side.
On the other side towards Osceola Road?
Not towards.
No, towards town square.
Oh, on the other side of Boulder Path, Village Road though.
No, he was definitely going past Boulder Path Road because across from Boulder Path Road is where Nelson Path was.
Yes, yes. Going around the corner.
And he was gonna be beyond that.
Yes, and we were concerned about that, yeah.
So this wouldn't preclude anyone from building the same style as the triplexes, would put in four of them in one long building? Just to.
The rest of C one?
Right, they could take four of the type of triplexes that was built now and just put them together.
Yeah. Put them together.
And that would be.
Yeah, cause they had those, you're gonna have less spaces. It's high density.
You never know when you need it to.
I know.
Like, like today.
Well, yeah, that's what we're doing beyond it, yeah.
Did remember that way earlier they were talking about, I was sorry.
Well, yeah, that's, uh, that's up to that wetlands, too.
That's an even bet, different view. I don't know where that was going or not going, but.
I don't think that was.
It's more conceptual.
I mean, up to the point where this, uh.
Yeah. Yeah.
Requested. Talked about it.
Well, that's, we're not cutting stone right there either. I mean, we're not.
Yeah.
Right.
No, but it does indicate that it is.
Oops.
Is beyond, is beyond the road.
Yeah. Right.
So I mean, we go from Black Bear essentially to the wetlands.
Or Nelson's Path or probably.
He goes beyond, I don't think.
It goes beyond Nelson's?
It's over here someplace.
Goes on almost opposite where Moose Run goes.
Yeah. So it's beyond Nelson's Path.
Almost Village Road.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I mean, first, first you gotta agree with the concept, then we get into the.
Well, let me ask you a question about the concept. Is, is the concept to maximize the number of units? Family units that are on the, per square, per acre? Or to maximize the number of units in a building?
Well, we're trying to get to high density. We're trying to get away from.
But what does high density mean? Does high density mean?
Businesses, hotels.
Yeah, but for housing, what you want is a lot of small apartments? See, I think that's the question, that, 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 you know, do we want? I mean, or, or is somebody gonna design something that's got, you know, twelve four-bedroom units that, you know, they somehow attach a corner of the building to them and make them go?
They get the residential, yeah.
And it meets the requirement, but it doesn't create any density because you got basically one family unit spread over a whole bunch of space.
Exactly.
Right.
Right, right.
So I get down to the question, what do we want in there?
Well, we're trying to hotels and businesses and.
I, I think we want bigger projects, right?
Right.
That have the potential for a lot of family units, smaller family units.
Or a lot of guests.
Or guests, right, or hotel rooms or family units, yeah.
It's probably where we're going or right on it, yeah.
We're also dealing with a developer coming in, whoever's gonna build a project, um, dealing with um, the financial environment and what is, what the market can bear at the time the developer decides he has the funds to develop.
Yeah, but if we wind up with all condos in there.
Oh, no, no, I'm.
Before the, before marketing turns to businesses, then there's no room for businesses.
That's right.
We've still got some V C land left. They, they can go build on.
Okay.
I mean, that's. That, that's why we created C one is to get high density and we're not getting that.
Well, it was to get, well, I, you know, I think you were the only one that was there and it was a pretty bitter fight to get it this far, right? To even get the C one created.
Yeah. I know.
Um, and what they did, it was, prior to this, it was V C land, right? And the concern was they were gonna build a whole bunch of,
Yeah.
They were gonna build a, you know, a whole bunch of single-family and
Yeah.
two-family homes.
Yeah, well, V C allows, allows private homes and we wanted.
That's by that land that was over by the ice arena. They wanted to put in individual homes over there.
C one allows everything, right?
Changed it to C one.
C one allows everything.
So I'm just wondering if we should structure it in a way, Ray, that says the minimum development that we'd allow from here on in is you gotta come in from plan on how you're gonna use a minimum of an acre. Don't come in and tell us what you're gonna do with a third of an acre. So the minimum development size becomes an acre. I, I don't, I'm just picking a number.
And would you say multi-use?
Well, no, and within that, if it's going to be single-family, how, if it's going to be just housing, you've gotta demonstrate, you know, that you, that it, it contains so many units per per acre. And, and I'd leave more flexibility as to whether it's, you know, cause there's a lot of, if, if, that's why I asked the question, what are we after? We after density in terms of number of units because you could build a, um, you know, a, a, a building that's got eight units that's dense and you could build something with twelve that's not dense.
Um.
We're coming back to the whole point of not knowing what, and I, I mean, it's a big tract of land, so you can't know, but.
Well, I think you, I think you can't, I think you, I don't think there's anything wrong with saying.
Saying, right.
If you're gonna develop this, you gotta, you know, the minimum development size is an acre.
No, I understand. I can see that. I can, I can see that.
You can't come in with something on a third of an acre.
But, but we're going back with an acre here, an acre, whatever you use, right? And
Right.
to, to, my way of thinking, you get this big piece of land and we don't know how it's gonna end up looking. We don't even know if there's gonna be a, a main road to get from point A to point B.
We can't know that. We'll never know that.
Well, okay.
That's, you know, we're not gonna know that.
Right.
As simple as that, but if we don't write something in, we're gonna wind up with a whole bunch of triplexes.
Well, I, I certainly would like to see a larger parcel than what the first phase of Green Peaks was so that
Right.
can have a better idea of how that's.
Well, it seems to me that the biggest thing we're deficient in is quality transient housing. You know, the four-star hotel that everyone keeps talking about.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Do we do some sort of exchange like we're talking about with the parking, we'll apply that to housing. If, if you're going to build X number of single-family homes, however they're laid out, you must also have plans for X number of transient housing and is there a way to do that?
Or if there's no market for that, I can't imagine there wouldn't be, but I, I'm just saying.
Well, then they can't build the single-family homes if there isn't.
Why wouldn't you put the number of, um,
We tried affordable houses.
living units per area of land, in other words.
We're not even affordable, it's like a five-star hotel.
Yeah. You've gotta design something that's got four units per acre or six, living units per acre.
Yeah, no.
Or I don't know what the number would be. We'd have to figure it out.
Yeah, that would, that would, there would.
Right. See, but a part of it gets down to the vision of what do we want in there? And I agree that we, the number one thing would be to reserve, we would want some additional transient housing, right?
Yeah.
Or if it was, if it was condominiums in a condominium hotel, although I, I, every one we've ever opened has seemed to fail. But part of it, they were designed improperly to begin with, you know, they weren't designed well.
Well, you got something like, um, the best question, what is it, the Silver Fox? That's not individually owned, that's not individually owned units. That's run like a regular.
Silver Fox. Right.
Well, I think they're all, they're all back to indivi, with the.
No, the Golden Needle and Black Bear.
No.
Golden Needle and Black Bear are condo hotels, but the
Right.
The Valley is not.
Valley Inn, they bought all the units back and the Snowy Owl bought the units back, right?
The Valley Mall. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think, I think, you know, I mean, it's forgotten some order.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I.
I don't know.
I, I believe they do.
Well, I think that, uh, I don't think you can dictate a lot of that stuff. I don't think you can say you can't have individually owned units and so forth, but I really, I think you can dictate the density. If, if it's going to be dwelling, you can dictate density. But I think as Bill said, it has to be on the square footage of land, not in a building because, as he says,
Right.
you can buy in buildings in any way you want and still meet the requirements and it would really tell.
And we're trying to push them towards
And if density is what you're looking for, it's by the.
bigger, bigger chunks, come in with bigger projects, not little, you know, nip here, nip, you know, not, not that he, I mean, they've built just one.
Right.
But what they're, what they're gonna keep doing is, 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 if I could sell two more, I'll, you know, I'll apply another third of an acre.
Yeah, let's be clear. Yeah, right.
And you end up with piecemeal development.
You're gonna have somebody. I, I agree with you, but you're gonna have somebody that's gonna come in and say, hey, I'm gonna, I'm gonna build three and hope to sell two so I can build, build something else because there's maybe not enough capital to build twelve units.
Well, you see, if, if you take it up to a bigger chunk of land, you force people to address the infrastructure.
Right.
Where is the road gonna go? Because you can't get at it any other way. You can't, you know?
Yeah.
What my fear, what we're gonna do now is, 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 is we're gonna keep evolving roads and stuff and it's gonna look silly.
Yeah, well, but it really dead-end roads.
Or are we gonna create?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Or are we gonna create a situation where for a while somebody won't be able to build because, um, it, they can't afford it?
Well, in C one, so.
That, that's the biggest thing right now.
But it's that, that's okay. I mean, that, that's what we're planning, cause we have, are supposed to have this vision and
Yeah.
maybe if we're paving the way and saying like this is reserved for this type of building, then that type of developer will come along, I mean.
Well, we better save the land for that kind of development. It'll also be too late.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Mark, didn't we not, or, actually, the rest of the board, did we not at the beginning of this Green Peaks in its, when it was coming before us, didn't we, we agreed that he would, he could extend the, uh, boundaries and it would be all included in the lot, was, lots would just grow? Somehow, didn't we?
No, you did not.
We didn't approve that?
You didn't agree to any, you gave him a single subdivision.
Right.
That's all you gave him. He proposed or indicated that the next time he came in, that he wanted to adjust that lot line, but he, you didn't give him approval of that.
Okay. Alright.
He just said that's what he was gonna do.
Yeah. Cause he came in that second time and wound up withdrawing his application because he wanted to come back.
Well, I think he, he uses an explanation as to how he was gonna phase it.
The phase development, right.
Yeah.
So that he would meet the set of requirements and change.
Yes, right, yeah, right. But you didn't pre-approve any.
Right. No, I, I think Bill's on the right track. That's a, that's a better way to get density.
It's just set a standard. If it's gonna be housing only. Now, it's another thing if you're gonna build shops and that's the, you know, so they, you know, like if you, you know, cause you've got those provisions in there. If you put stores in, the second floor could be housed.
Right, right.
You know? What we want is more housing units. I think, I don't know, I, you know.
Can we, we, I'm not necessarily.
I mean, we all agree we don't want single-family home, homes in there, right?
Right, C one, I think, was set us for, for businesses and we were going to, we didn't wanna eliminate housing because of the upstairs apartments.
Completely. Right.
And we also didn't want single-family homes on the floor there.
Right.
Those were the two things.
But I, I, I don't think it was, I, I think if somebody came in and did not wanna make residents part of the development, but I don't think we would have any objection to that. I don't think it's necessary for them to do that.
No.
Because we have other areas all around town with the high density.
And then I remember talking because we went around Cochran's Pond too for C one, right?
Yeah.
Because there was supposedly something coming up on both ends that were going to sit on opposite sides of the pond.
Well, there's a special, I forget what the, there's a special zone in there that's got all kinds of rules that are written around.
Yeah.
Split it up into six separate lots.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
It's probably not a good idea really.
No.
Well, it's what was negotiated. I, and, and I remember that it, that was a difficult negotiation to begin with and, and then you run into the pri, I mean, my other concern a little bit about where we're going here is we're going back on what I thought was twelve. on what I thought was twelve years ago, and I wasn't there, was a bitterly fought thing.
Of?
To get multifamily hous- you know, I think Cantlin was pretty insistent that multifamily housing was to be included, period.
The C one. Oh, yeah. He was.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, with, you know, it's his land, we're taking his right away from him.
Well, we did that when we took away the private homes.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Is there a
We were looking for more tax dollars.
That's the whole basis of zoning, that's.
Yes.
That's the zoning issue.
Is, is there a way, or is this not possible or not possible, I guess? Can, if a developer wanted to come in and build another two sections of, of what he built, is it not? I, I understand they come in with, with a, um, a plan that we approve or, or we don't approve. There isn't any way to say if you come in with a plan, we gotta see a plan for, for an acre of land and how it's gonna be used?
If you write it in your regulations.
At least that way you can say, okay, with this track, we can see what it's gonna be. If they wanna build three, three and three and they can fit it on the track, maybe we don't care of his timeframe, but we know it's gonna be there.
I, I believe in this section, we specifically state there is no such thing as minimum lot size, right?
That's correct, there is no minimum lot size.
We say there's no minimum lot size.
Cause it's less than half an acre where Green Peak is now.
And there's no lot.
Right, we said there's no minimum lot size.
There's no minimum lot size and there's no, there's no control of lot coverage. So you can cover a hundred percent of a lot.
Well, I, I think it's twenty, I think it was.
No, it says not applicable.
Oh, okay.
Isn't that for businesses though?
No, that is for the zone.
You think it can go up to, uh.
In C one, so you, you don't need, you don't need those buffers for, on the lot for?
In C one. No, there is open space requirement of twenty percent, but there is no lot coverage applicable.
In some areas, there's no setbacks.
And there is no setback.
Well, if it's a business, there's no setbacks. If it's residential, there are setbacks, right?
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Um, well, there is a minimum, setback is minimum of thirty-five feet between building
And right of way of the state.
and right of way and twenty feet for paved edge. So what you might wanna consider is if you put in a lot size for residential, waive some of the setback, um, which would allow the density, the buildings to be closer together and would allow more density. I mean, that may be a way to, to do it. But so if you're, if you propose, but then what's gonna happen is well, but then that's not necessarily a bad thing, 'cause if you do this only for residential and you don't, you keep the same controls in place for commercials, that's okay, because you want this to be the area.
Yeah, right.
Everybody's been in agreement that this is where we want commercial development to happen, right?
Right, exactly.
If you had it for a lot size and somebody came in, they would have to show a plan for the entire lot size, or could they show a plan for part of it?
They gotta show the whole lot, yeah, it's the whole, like, you're buying the minimum lot.
The whole thing.
You have to show the whole lot.
And that's not agreed, Chris.
Well, but if you, he put, it was a third of an acre, right, Bill, a third of an acre for these, for the three units that he built.
I'm assuming that's what they, I don't even know.
I thought it was just under a half acre.
Does anything say there?
On there, on the plan?
I thought it was just under a half acre, but I'm, I'm not sure.
This is, uh.
Green Peaks?
Yeah, the lot that they run out.
Can I ask you?
It's just green, green.
This doesn't.
Well, what if you said, say, you can pick any number you want?
Well, Bill said an acre, that sounds, that sounds reasonable. How many acres do, do we have there in C one? See, I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's mean.
It's, uh, it's gotta be over three, right?
What's that?
It's gotta, it's gotta be, the, uh, just across the road has gotta be over three, because at one time.
Over the ice arena area?
Well, no, yeah, just the area that we're talking about now. In other words, not including the section by the pond.
With the.
It's gotta be three.
Well, I'd say.
Because he had originally proposed the P U D there.
Well, I think it's way over.
And I think the minimum on P U D is three acres, right?
I've thought it.
That's a, it's two acres, but it's, let's, well.
Two acres?
I mean, Cochran's Pond is about four acres and look at the relationship there, so that's
Yeah. It's gotta be more than that, Bill, at least.
Probably have a ten acres there.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's gotta be at least two, yeah, or.
Right. But I think your proposal, development size is an acre, seems reasonable.
I, 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 I went back and read the P U D requirements. What we really want is, I'm thinking, some imagination.
Yeah, I know that.
And, and you almost want them to build a P U D type thing.
P U D, exactly.
But we say that to do that, you gotta have, you've got a two acres.
Two acres.
Yep.
Which, which is, I don't know, are there we?
The, um, the existing three units are on exactly a half an acre.
Oh, it is, okay.
The remaining land after taking that half acre out is eighteen point one nine, including the parking lots.
Wow.
Eighteen point one nine acres?
Including the parking lots.
Black Bear. And that's a, the lot across from Town Square.
That's correct.
Oh, okay.
And then the, the open area where the seventh, old seventh fairway was is twelve point oh nine.
Yeah.
Twelve, yeah, that's quite good.
So if he's got eighteen acres to play with, maybe making the minimum development size two acres is not all that restrictive.
And, and then you could even write in that you waive parking, I mean, if he does certain things, then parking can be traded off, parking can be under or, you know, things like that.
Yeah, 'cause I got a proposal for shared parking, so I think we gotta get that in there anyway.
Right. I mean, just, just eyeballing it, it looks like the, the parking lots are at least between a third and a half of the eighteen acres are the parking lots.
If someone, if person A owns a lot of land and person B has a facility that uses parking on person A's land, can person A sell that land and develop it even though person B requires that parking lot to be within the?
Well, you've required easements, so it depends on what the easement language says. Some easements say, you only have this until I need it. Some easements say, you have this and if I wanna use it, I've gotta give you something else to replace.
But is the planning board in the position to deny an application if it puts, it renders an adjacent property invalid at that particular point, or, or using non-plan?
If you, if you approved a plan which puts their parking on the second parcel and that second parcel comes in and develops that parking lot, so that you can't, you shouldn't create a non-conforming use by granting the second project.
Okay.
I mean, I think that would be a valid reason for you to say no, unless they show you where the parking is going.
Yeah, mitigating by, doing something.
Yeah, right.
Suppose, Ray, we actually just made a statement that all future development in this area will be a P U D.
Might have to, might have to knock it to two acres.
That, that, two acres, well, well, now, now you got that, your minimum that you can, you've gotta come forward with this plan for two acres. And we encourage you to maximize that, you know, write something that essentially says, we encourage you to maximize the density in this area. You know, and not put any restrictions on it in terms of what could be in that development, you know, or the setbacks or anything else and.
Now we're doing it.
You know, and, and, but, but we'd have to be careful about saying that our goal is to get dense development. And we'll allow some flexibility to allow maybe more Green Peaks if you're gonna use some other piece for really higher density.
Yeah, as long as you get it somehow.
Yeah. I don't know.
Bill, what would keep people from then building a single, three-unit multifamily dwelling on two acres?
Um, we'd have to put density rules in as part of, in other words, it, we, you'd have to, at a minimum for housing, if it's only housing, you'd have to be able to demonstrate so many units per acre.
Okay.
You know, but within that, you, you could, you know, have some big ones, some little ones. I mean, it would make it reasonable, I don't know what it would be.
Ten, fifteen, twenty units?
I have no idea, I'd have to, I'd have to sit down and figure it out. What we've got right now is, uh, Green Peak is sitting at six per acre.
Correct.
So if you met a goal of twenty in two acres. Well, I don't know, we'd pick another number, you know, yeah, I, I don't know, twenty, thirties, thirty units in two acres?
Well, look at the Black Bear lots, how many, there's about, how many, hundred, there's a hundred rooms in there?
Hundred and six, isn't it?
Hundred and six.
And what does that sit on as far as, um?
Acreage, I have that, right, I have that possibility.
Well, what it would do is it would, it would say to somebody, if, if I came in and proposed building a
So that's a hundred per acre.
small hotel with, uh, you know, with twenty units in it. That would give me a lot of latitude on the remaining acreage to put less dense development in. Some concept like that.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, that kind of trade-off, yeah.
Yeah. Because i- it's the age-old dilemma that right now the only thing that's selling
Right, I mean, that's.
is the bigger things.
But that's not necessarily long-term what we want.
Right.
But that's not what we want, right?
Well, there's other land in town, high-density residential that can be developed and, and sold in that market. Not, not all the remaining land is in C one, is it?
No, we still got some B C land across the street over in Moose Run.
I thought, the whole idea was that, the whole idea of changing those things was to concentrate an area right in the middle of town where it was gonna be. You took it all from here and there, all the place where it was scattered, concentrated it here, so this is where we're going to get the high concentration of businesses that we need in, uh, the areas around.
Yeah, and I, and Ray's, Ray's point is, is the way we got these regulations written right now, that ain't gonna happen.
But Moose Run, look at Moose, look at the history of Moose Run, that was village commercial. He came in, he convinced us he was gonna build half houses on it.
Yep.
Go, along the golf course.
Right.
And we approved that. Then he came back in and he added more houses and then he added more houses and more houses.
And then he said, I'm gonna do whatever I'm gonna sell.
And now we got a loose strip. And then he said, well, I wanted, well, no, I guess the association came in and said, we want it low density to protect ourselves.
Yeah.
Right.
So now we wind up with a little tiny strip
Yep.
of B C land.
I think it's all three lots.
So we lost that whole B C area.
Three lots.
And because we couldn't do anything about it, because our regulations allowed it.
Yeah.
So if we don't do something, we're gonna, we're gonna blow C one.
C one is actually a pretty large area.
Right, so I'm thinking with the amount of acreage, it's not that restrictive to say. You, you gotta, you know, the minimum development size is gonna be two acres. You gotta tell us what you're gonna do with two acres.
And if it's a P U D, then they get setbacks that they can do and make it more density.
And by definition, if he comes in with plans to two acres, he can declare it a P U D.
Right.
In which case gives him a lot of flexibility.
Right.
As long as he meets the density requirements.
Yes.
And as long as he gives up the open space, because that's required in the P U D.
What, does it require that there be some open space?
Yeah, there, there requires green, I think it says specifically green space.
The only thing it allows is really, uh, setback changes.
Setback changes, right, so that it can be more than.
So you can put the buildings closer together.
Right, um, but, uh.
In, in common driveways, that was the other thing.
Painted drive, driveway's green. Can I give you something else?
Yeah, usually.
The selectmen shall require such arrangements of structures and open spaces within site development as necessary to ensure uh, that adjacent properties are not adversely affected, um. Preservation, maintenance and ownership of open spaces provided with the P U D shall be accomplished by either dedication of the land as a public park or creating a permanent open space easement on and over said private open spaces to guarantee they remain perpetually in recreational use with ownership and maintenance being the responsibility of the owner's association, um, or articles of association and bylaws which are satisfactory to the selectmen of the town.
Mark, is there anything in there about driveways? I thought P U Ds had to have shared driveways, that was another thing for keeping open space.
Lots over two acres, over two acres in size in any zoning district shall have the option of being considered as a P U D.
Right, because Emeryville is a P U D, right?
I'm sorry?
Wasn't Emeryville a P U D?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Um, the selectmen may permit exceptions with respect to setback, open space and building proximity provided that the landing question is under a comprehensive development scheme that stipulates, one, that the various uses are all permitted in the district.
Yep.
Okay.
Two, that the total open space resulting from the P U D approach will exceed the minimum percentage required by the zoning district.
Okay.
Three, that the building height requirement shall be adhered to. Four, that arrangement for internal and external circulation by vehicles and pedestrians shall be safe and attractive. And five, that the scheme shall not be detrimental to adjacent properties. And that's what the P U D is. So you can't put anything not allowed in the zone in the P U D. It just lets you put it closer together.
Closer together.
And then whatever resulting open space, which must be more than the minimum open space in the zone, right, twenty percent is in C one, so it would have to be over twenty percent. That has to be a public park or have a permanent easement.
Right.
For recreational use.
So this, uh, two-acre minimum only applied to housing?
Well, I, yeah, I'm, I'm just again thinking out loud here, I, I'm thinking that w- w- from here on in, we don't wanna see small developments in here.
Yeah.
No, I think, you gotta, whatever you do, it's gotta be a minimum of two acres.
Okay.
And it could be mixed, I mean, you can have anything you want, but don't come in with plans for less than two acres.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying there shouldn't be some flexibility in how you build it.
Yeah.
But conception, you know, you gotta come in with plans that shows what you're gonna do with minimum of two acres.
You're still gonna need, uh, you're gonna still have a requirement for, um, um, uh, housing units?
Well, I think you gotta put some density. If you want density, you're gonna have to say, here's the number.
Otherwise, there's no density.
You know, you gotta come up, figure out a way to get, you know, in two acres, I have twenty, thirty units? If it's just gonna be housing, thirty units. If it's mixed, then, you know, it's mixed. I mean, if you've got a combination of, you know, housing on top of businesses, that's another story.
Right.
What if it does?
Maybe that goes down to ten, Bill, or something, have at least a number
Uh, yeah.
that's in there.
What happens though if he comes, let's say a developer comes through, be it Waterville Company or whatever, and in those remaining open areas of C one, they wanna put all P U Ds in there?
I think that's what we want.
But I thought, we talked about having hotel and they're talk, the gondola and, um, you know, shops, additional shops, we talked about that.
But that's okay though, because hotels and motels are uses by right in the C one zone.
In that.
Right.
So it could be covered by a P U D. If they want the hotels to be closer dimensionally, get rid of those dimensions.
Okay.
And they wanna group that development together and create other open space to do that, then they can.
To get some leeway.
Right.
Cause I also thought we were thinking as far as bringing in more tax revenue too to the town.
Well, that's a higher density for me.
Yeah.
Higher density for transient guests, right, higher density, single-family homes.
Right. Well, P U D, if it turns out to be housing, it's gonna be single-family homes, no?
No.
Wouldn't be indoor lodges.
No, well, I mean, it depends on if, if you write a rule. No, well, I mean, it depends on if you write a rule that says it's gotta be twenty of, in two acres, you're gonna have to have a minimum of thirty family units, I mean, ain't gonna build single family housing.
They can't, single family is out.
Yeah, right, but it's not gonna build many big units.
Right. So where would that go into the?
I have no idea. I had to go back and read the whole thing.
But you look at Emeryville, they have shared driveways, open up.
Yeah, that's got nothing to do with P U D.
Well, usually.
Even though it was a P U D.
You would be changing, you would be changing paragraph three, four, one, eight, four, two with lot, uh, I'm sorry, three, four, one, eight, four, one. And the zoning lot size, minimum lot size would be two acres.
You're in the C one?
C one, page thirty-one. Because right now it says not applicable.
Right.
So you would say minimum lot size of two acres. You would, you could then add a paragraph three, four, one, eight, five. With, I'm sorry, three, four, one, eight, four, six, which would be density. And that's where you would come up with the language for how many units per acre. Minimum.
So many buildings.
Or, I'm sorry. Probably put it in, yeah, either slide six, seven and eight down, put it in as six or however you want to do it. I wouldn't put it after Corcoran's Pond or the retail exceptions, but if you wanted to put it after proximity of buildings, it could be a new paragraph seven. And then slide proximity of Corcoran's Pond down one.
And where, where would the minimum lot size be? I missed that.
Minimum lots, the minimum lot size, zoning lot size is three, four, one, eight, four, one.
Right now, the very top.
Right, the very top.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. So far away.
It would be two, so it would be two.
Okay.
Are we really ready to do this though?
I don't know.
I don't know.
That's the, that's the dilemma. I, I, I know what the, the problem doing nothing is, what are the consequences, but I, I, you know, I think that to make a change like this, where we're, we're tinkering, I mean, this is private property and we're tinkering with the value of that property by changing these formulas.
Yeah.
Um, that we, we, we can do that, but we've gotta clearly be able to, to show a link to the, to the town's business plan, right? To the master plan. It's gotta be driven by what the master plan says we need to do. Or, or we're gonna, I mean, you gotta expect Cantlin's gonna fight this tooth and nail.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, it's gonna be a vicious fight.
And how about this, this preliminary, preliminary S E group, uh, plan that we're about to look at? And looking at that and seeing how.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we don't even have that. We need to take that, you gotta put that in, you gotta look at the master plan and from that, you gotta look down and say, okay, based on that, we, we, we adopt this vision. And therefore we're changing the regulations as follows. But, um, because I was looking at this stuff, you know, that we've got now in C one. Even things like hotels, motels, inns, public lodging, we don't specify anything. We could have a two room hotel. You know, I think.
I think, well, we're definitely not gonna get there, I mean, this, this year, I guess.
Yeah, well.
I guess we just gotta hope for, not gonna get stunned next year.
Well, I mean, the one thing you, you could do, I mean, if you're stuck in there and said, look, minimum development's two acres, then, then by definition, nothing's gonna happen.
True, financially, yeah.
Well, it's gonna really throw a monkey wrench into any plans you might have had, because I, I, I don't think they were thinking of committing to that big of a development at this stage for Green Peak.
Well, to my understanding, it's gonna come back with, oh, four buildings and that'd probably be two acres.
Well, okay.
But you and I, you and I talked and we both had a
No, we don't really know what he's gonna do.
Difference of opinion with that one, but.
No, we really don't know what he's gonna do, but if you had it two acres, that means it'd come back in.
Why would he wanna come back and show the rest of the hand?
Because the reason he withdraw it was because when he showed us the second building and he wanted to do some things without showing us everything. We said, you gotta show us everything if we, if we can apply certain rules to it. If you only give us, if you only show us this much, we have to apply these rules to them the way they are now. And he says, well, I don't want those rules because when I build it all out, it'll all make sense. Well, we said, well, build it all out.
We don't know that.
Well, I don't wanna build it all. And he said, well, okay, then we're only gonna look at the next building. And he withdrew his application. So I'm assuming he's gonna come back with the whole thing. Cause otherwise we just go through the same dance.
I'm sorry, I'll go out. I don't know what's going on.
And I may be wrong. You know, we don't know.
Yeah.
And Mark, isn't the only thing as far as putting a freeze on building would be some change or to the master plan by statute? And that would put a moratorium on building if we, no, I thought by state statute, if you put a, if you put a moratorium on, um, your, uh, master plan and made changes to it, then builders couldn't come in to build.
No, the, the statutory thing is whatever, whatever, um, zoning ordinances, changes that you forward to town meeting, they have the effect of law until the town meeting vote. So a developer can't come in in January with a new plan and get in under the wire
Right.
on a zoning change that you've sent to town meeting.
Okay.
Now, if it gets defeated at town meeting, then
It's all hung.
it's all out, but, and in that interim period, it has the same effect as if it's part of the zoning.
Well, I feel better that we're finally getting to a point where we wanna address the bigger picture. Yeah, I mean, cause I for one, I've been very frustrated with all of the last year or two years.
Well, I, you know, again, the, would, oh. I mean, make the zoning lot size, you can change that to two acres. Now, it could very well be what he's proposing is on two acres, but it's gonna force him to go up to two acres.
We ready to do that, could we?
Well, I'm gonna get into another practical problem. I, I don't, I think Cantlin's gone, right?
He is, for five months.
I, we can't change this property without giving him a chance to come and fight, scream, right?
I don't know.
Hmm?
Mark?
Well, just as a, you know, whoever I own the land, I'd be furious at you.
Common courtesy.
Yeah, right.
If something was big enough.
I mean, it, it's not our land, I mean.
I mean, I don't know what he's doing, whatever, but it's just an airplane ticket. Round trip.
Well.
I mean, you do business with, it's gonna do business with attorneys or, or developer, you know. You don't need to be present for that, but, I mean, if he wants to come and
I, I think we need to.
I'm not suggesting we do that, I'm just saying it's not out of the question.
If, and the only reason that, to do it is to make it more difficult for him to proceed now. Any other changes, I think you gotta review the results of all the studies we've done and everything else, it's gonna, you know.
And this is gonna be the same.
Otherwise, it just looks like we're spot zoning for the fun of it.
But this, and this is.
We gotta if we're applying it to all of C one, if we're applying the change.
Well, we gotta have some real rationale though. I mean, you know, I don't think.
Well, Bill, what if you didn't, what if you didn't change the minimum lot size, but you changed the density?
But how would we state that?
Well, you, you have an example of three units on a half an acre.
The minimum density of all future development would have to meet a standard of
Well, what I'm saying is, do you want that to be double? If it's a residential only development, do you want that to be double what Green Peak is? Do you want it to be triple? So you could say double sounds good, okay?
So that would get us to what, to six per acre, double, twelve.
So six units per half acre, twelve units per acre. Um, however you wanna state it, you could, you could go down as far as six units on a half acre. Which gives him a little bit of flexibility, right? He could have put, he could have put two buildings on, you know, two thirds of an acre and have another third open or, you know, it, it lets him do design work a little.
Right, he has more flexibility if you, if you make the requirement on an acre than if you make it on a half acre.
Yeah, that, that would be fine. But do you do it for nine, ten units per acre?
Well, the thing is, I'm looking at the master plan and in two, one, eight, two, it's, um, expressing how happy the town is with low density residential homes.
Hello.
In which area of town?
It doesn't specify an area. This is, this is under land use.
And it does say, well, there is something that says about the remaining vacant land as to be carefully.
But the one thing we're missing, and this is what we tried to get at a couple of years ago, we had somebody come in, the zoning expert. We have no idea about the percentage of the way we're, we're zoned. We have a C one which is supposed to be for very high res, uh, business density and so forth. But it's a big area for the town, it's five hundred acres big.
Right.
And so, I mean, we may be way out of proportion from what the, uh, the norm would be, and this would come out if someone was to challenge this and say, oh, you know, you got an awful lot of land here that you're not letting me do the right thing with. So I, I think you have to be careful. I, I still say, there's gotta be someone out there that would look at this and say, you know, you're way off base and you're trying to protect a huge amount of land here, when you really only need half of what you've got. And you're, and this is where you would run into the problem if it was to be challenged. Because you'd really, you know, we're saying, well, gee whiz, we gotta save some land here, make sure we got enough of motels and hotels and businesses. But we're just kinda grabbing this area right out of the air. We don't have any basis for it at all. I'll bet that land is probably, what, fifteen percent of the whole town.
Twenty acres. It certainly is, is over ten percent of the
Yeah.
No, it's, no, it's not. It's, um, ten percent would be fifty-five acres. So, so it's probably about five acres, uh, five percent.
So is, is all the, the C one, did, you added it up and it's to?
No, no, this one parcel that we're talking about.
But I'm talking about all C one.
All C one. The C one is the twelve and the eighteen.
So it's thirty.
So it's thirty, so that's still less than ten percent of the.
Less than ten percent, but still.
But this parcel still is going to be, however it gets developed or however rules get changed, is gonna be the single biggest impact left in town.
Absolutely.
Well, it's the only impact left in town.
Right, but I mean, which is, I think, the reason why, you know, I don't think, I don't know.
And, and if you talk, if you think about what you want, what you want is, what everybody wants is a nice hotel or two and maybe a, you know, maybe a town center or something or, you know, it's something along those lines. And if we got those things, we don't necessarily care what happens. We're not as tied to what happens to the rest. The problem is, is you write your regulations and they start on the rest.
Right.
And there's no assurance that in the end, you're gonna get what you want. In the middle, it'll all just become the rest. And I don't know any way to stop, you know, how do you stop that?
Well, I think you go, like, you, I know, I hear your concern about the numbers.
Right.
But I think you put in very high numbers initially.
Right.
You can always back off of them year to year.
Can, could we?
But then you have stopped.
But could we write a rule that say, that said, look, our goal in C one relative to residential is that we would like twenty percent allocated to businesses, business space. We would like, um, twenty percent mixed and the rest can be housing, and in each one of these, our goal on the housing would be such and such a density per acre. And, uh, and we don't care how you do it from here to the end, but the problem is, i- i- one, one guy owns the land now. Uh, you know, if I wrote regulations like that, suppose he sold it to three other people.
Right.
How do, how do you held, how do you, okay, the one guy built one, now you're gonna hold the other guy? You, well, you, 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 you're too bad, he, he acted first, you're stuck. You got stuck with the stuff that doesn't sell?
Well, and, but, but the P U D allows the combination of different ownership into a development, so that if it got sold, three or four people, two of them could get together, pool their land and do it.
Right.
You could do it based on that minimum development size that you were talking about.
So you, you think we could for this whole thing, right?
Well, I think.
That at a minimum, in the end, it's got to be so much for hotel, you know, so much, so much your businesses and shops and the remaining can be developed. So at any stage along the line, we're gonna keep applying that formula. And when you get down to the last stage, it's the last stage, the formula gets applied, and that's the only thing that can be built then. You've, you know, if you built all the housing, you're out of luck.
I think we can ask, I don't think we know until we ask if we can do that.
If we can do that, yeah, we certainly should ask.
And at that point though, Bill, you'd have to make sure that you had that, 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 at some point, you'd have to say, you gotta stop now because this last twenty percent is gonna be reserved for this.
That, it's gonna be a hotel.
You can't do a march, it's gotta be a hotel or it's gotta be commercial.
But you can't justify where that twenty percent can be.
No, you gotta give them flexibility on where they.
Where it's gonna be located.
Yeah.
But you could say that you're now down to the final twenty, you have no choice. You must build something.
And the question is, do you take what is there already and count that towards the percentages? So does town square count towards the commercial that you want or whatever it is? So you're gonna take the whole area, you're gonna, you're gonna look at what is there, you're gonna subtract that out, you're gonna break it down into acreage. And we're gonna say, this many acres are already condo lodges.
Yep.
Multi, multi family dwellings, this much is commercial, this much is vacant land.
I can see if you're not allocating specific areas for each purpose, how all the areas or the other eighty percent can be developed and the only twenty percent remaining is for hotel could be in a position geographically within this property that's not feasible for a hotel.
I was just gonna say that too, exactly.
That's up to the developer.
Then it stays as vacant land.
Then it stays as vacant.
Well, you still don't get what you want out of it, this, this is a town.
Right.
Well, but you can't make someone build something, right?
Well, no, 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 I, I, I get that part of it.
Could he build? My concern too is along Corcoran's Pond, especially the other side over by Golden Eagle where Bill has his wedding gazebo. We could put a, you know, a P U D in there too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we just don't have any control over.
The only, the only place where there are specific rules is right along the edge of Corcoran Pond. He has a right to build decks and lots and.
There's probably a third of that eighteen acres is parking lot.
Yeah, so let's say six acres of it is parking lot right now.
Mm-hmm.
You have twelve acres left.
Left.
At a half an acre with three units, if everything gets built like Green Peak, you're talking about twenty-four times three.
Yeah.
So you're talking about seventy-two. Oh, that's
Not enough.
Not for that, it's, I don't think that's enough.
No, that's not it.
That's not only is ten for that.
You could build another Black Bear and get way more, and still have.
Right, you, one point seven five acres, you have a hundred and six units.
Exactly.
So you're talking about using twelve acres to build less than that.
Yeah.
Is that what we, is that what the town wants?
You end up, um, uh, Village Condominiums is built on twelve acres, they got ninety-six units.
That's right.
Right.
So you end up with Village or, yeah, not even a, not even a Windsor Hill.
They may, they may look, the buildings will look different, the.
Not even a Windsor Hill?
Yeah.
Well, that's cause, you know, it's getting bigger.
Windsor Hill and Village is two stories high.
Well, if we're creating a, looking at creating a special zone, you know, for, for this, couldn't we also create a special zone along Valley Road for an in-lodge type of area? A really, really high density? And then we would know where it would go?
No, it's a near approach.
That's a good idea.
Or you could split C one and you could basically say, look, here's one section, here's a piece of C one, you can do what you want. Remaining C one, no multifamily housing.
Well, we tried that, we tried that.
Zero, none. Right.
We tried to create a C two.
Yeah, that's right.
Which would eliminate.
And it didn't go.
No, because, uh, you know, I don't buy owned property, I mean, then I wanted to sell it, you wanna, you, you wanna keep open your options.
So I guess the thing that's left on the table is the, uh, the lot size, making it two acres.
In the area that.
And the density statement.
Eric, Ray, are you talking about the area that you were talking about?
C one.
No, no, this would.
The whole thing.
No, what I, what I suggested is out the window, this, this would supersede that. I mean, this is a different way of doing the same thing. Probably a better way of doing the same thing.
You're just gonna decide on the density, right? Formula?
The second.
You have to decide on whether or not we wanna put in two acres for, for twenty fifteen in the density. I mean, this is not a forever thing, it's, it's our first step.
Right.
I just think it's important to take a step here.
So instead of seventy-two, if you doubled the density, you'd have a hundred and forty-four units, okay, as a first step. So if you double what he did at Green Peak and you said six units per half acre or twelve units per acre to give him some flexibility and set the minimum lot size at one acre, then for a year, you've protected it, you can think about it more, you've at least taken a first step. It's not too onerous, it's double what he did, but it's still not twenty units per, or whatever. I mean, it's not an astronomical number, but it's, at least you have an idea of what that means in that land for a year.
So, and, and if nothing gets, if, if no plan comes before us in the year.
Yeah.
And due to our research or whatever, we decided that number needed to be changed, then it's.
Well, change it, do it next year.
Yeah, do it in sixteen.
Do it in sixteen.
What if we, what if we decided to, to do what Wendy suggested? Make another commercial C two zone like we tried before to, for, you know, to have some of that? Could we do that too?
This year?
No, I'm saying this year.
Oh, yeah. Sure.
Not this year.
You give us all next year that digest of this stuff, but, but Mark suggested changing the minimum lot size to an acre and having the density of twelve units per acre for this year.
And that's basically double his density of what he's used so far.
Well, it, it will, it, I, I think it effectively just would stop any plan development. That would be the effect of it, because I don't know if anybody has any intent, I don't know if there's a market right now for that.
I don't know, um.
There's a lot of units for sale in town and not much is happening.
Yeah.
So it doesn't seem to be much of an appetite.
Um, well, that's not what we're seeing coming from the registry.
Yeah.
I can tell you that.
No, it's not selling.
Stuffing, stuff is selling.
Stuff is, is selling, it is.
Stuff is, I mean, on a, it's not a flood by any means, but it's steady.
Steady it.
Every month.
A lot of people that are coming in for B B T S Pinnacle programs are buying properties.
I mean, if you wanna take your chance and just let it go for a year and digest it, you can leave it the way it is, I, you know.
What if we did the one acre lot? But you're gonna develop an acre without the density this year. That would allow him to finish off this project. And it would certainly make Bob happy.
It would prevent the lot line adjustment approach to incrementalism.
He'd have to commit with the whole thing, that's what he has to do with Bob once.
You still don't get your density, but at least you.
Not this year.
You, you, but you weren't dealing with that parcel, so that's.
Well, it's the only thing we know.
That we know of, yeah. That we, exactly, that's the thing. That's the scary thing is.
Yeah, that's it. I mean, that's probably the, the only, you know.
Could it be grandfathered because it's already been?
No, because it hasn't been approved, it's no submission.
He's taking it out, he's.
Oh, he took it out?
He withdrew the.
withdrew the application.
There's no application before it, so no, it's not grandfathered.
Is there an acre left or is an acre including?
Oh, just, much more than an acre left.
There's seventeen acres left.
No, 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 I don't mean that, I, I mean in.
Well, if this is half, he's coming in with, with, he'd have to come in with two more buildings.
Well, we don't know that that is his overall picture at this point.
No, we don't.
We're, we're just, we're saying that because he threw it at us and maybe that's what he might end up looking like, but we don't know that for sure.
But at least it'd stop people from coming in with, with half acre developments.
Well, how.
But, but realistically, I, you know, I, I have to go, I can't remember, Ray, can we get him on, you, you know, you can't, what you're doing here is, is violating the spirit of these regulations, which is, you know, you're, if he wants the, if he wants the benefit of the combinations, right? I mean, this is what he ran into last time, you can't come in with another half acre and then say, well, now I got a whole acre, apply the rules for an acre. We, you got, we're applying the rules to two half acres and they're tougher than if you, if you came in with the whole acre, right?
You have to.
Well, I think, I, I, I guess I, I would support just changing to one acre or two acres. I think the number one sin we got right now is, is this piecemeal development.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think you'd have to assume that.
And the response being that we wanna stop this gibberish of.
What he's built and what he's. Right, but you.
Give me another building, a little more land, adjust these lines, roads in the wrong place. I mean, we got a road that's half on another piece of property, right, on a.
But you have to assume if, if what he built and he's, three units and he sold three units, that the next phase is gonna be similar because that's what apparently can be sold, right?
If we were to say two acres, would the existing structure that's been completed be part of that? Or would it be, and it, you know, not included in the calculation of the two acres?
I think it wouldn't be, right.
Well, if he comes in, if he comes in with a whole.
There's a lot line, so it would not be included.
Right.
Yeah, but he, he'll merge the lot lines to make it one big lot, to make it an acre.
Because if he did that with the piece on both sides of the existing building, that would be about two acres.
No, I don't think two acres.
Well, I, I don't, I don't, I don't get, Ray, why he would come in with a plan for, for that many more right now. When he would, he could do, or come in with a plan for three and have that flexibility for that other stuff to do anything he wanted later. I mean, why would he wanna come in and get approval for something and be stuck with it? That's why I said to you, I, I.
Because he's running, he's gonna run up the, he's running into the limits already of, of definitions of roads and the rest. We can't just keep connecting driveways.
What, what was the reason you gave up the density requirement I was going? What, why did we, you had originally suggested the, uh, density increase and then a minimum of one acre? And now the density increase has been abandoned and we're dealing with just the one acre or the two acre. What was the reason for abandoning the density?
Because it would preclude him from building the rest of Green Peak.
Yeah, but the, the application was withdrawn, I mean, it's just as if nothing was there now, right?
Yeah, no, but we know what he's planning on developing and.
You do?
Well, you bet this, no, I guess you're right, I guess you're right, I'm just trying to be fair to.
Not really.
We've been fooled before.
Just trying to be fair to the development so that he can finish what, what he showed us to begin with, because.
Well, apparently that, I mean, I, I could understand that, except, I, just now you're telling me that he withdrew the application, I mean, that's, this plan doesn't exist anymore, what exists is this.
Yeah, right.
That's right.
That's gone, I mean, every, I was thinking, I was thinking, erase and take it right out.
And he may not decide to go that way, he could ultimately.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't stop him from developing the rest of that land, just with the new density requirement, right?
On the other side, yeah. Exactly.
Why not make it?
The only, the only problem with the dense, the only problem I can see with the density requirements, it, it's something we would like, but what we're taking is the value of his acreage. His argument is that's unsellable, no one wants to build that kind of development here. So therefore you've significantly diminished the value of my property by putting this rule in place. You may never possibly even sell anything.
Well, is that.
In today's market, I don't know, is that a concern of ours? But I'm just saying, that's the argument we're gonna hear and I think we really would have to have our ducks in a row to withstand it.
Is it, is it true that a smaller unit with a density increase wouldn't sell for half the price of what's, I mean, those are pretty expensive units?
The other thing.
I mean, you can also, there's a couple of reasons why things don't sell, and one of them is that price is divided.
Right.
Another, another thing, wouldn't, as, I mean, I'm not, not a developer, but I would assume if he wanted to go and build the exact same thing that he just built, wouldn't he already have the plans and all that? I mean, as far as engineering costs and whatever, wouldn't he be saving some money with?
Well, all of that, he's basically told us what he wants to do with the whole eighteen acres, so.
That was done.
Well, I know, but if you have the same reason and, you know, you can't do much with the, with the whole, you know, yeah.
Well, I think the practical would be that we would have to get, he'd have to be building units that are thousand to fifteen hundred square feet.
At a lower price.
Oh, at a much lower price.
Which opens a different.
The question is, is there any market for units that size?
Well, maybe, maybe not, I don't know.
I mean, that's what the, that's what the Golden Eagle Lodge is, right?
Little different.
Well, probably even smaller.
But there at a much higher density, I mean.
Much higher density, yeah.
You're talking a little bit more than townhouse situation, yeah.
Well, because he stacked them, yeah, right.
I don't know what the density is at, um, Forest Hole.
I'm not sure of the acreage, but there's forty-eight units throughout, counting the other building, Forest Hole and this, uh,
That to me seems like about the density that it was.
Uh, forty-eight, maybe fifty-six units.
Yeah, fifty-six units.
The latest one was presidential, it was built to hide, you know, that was crammed in, I don't know how many units it was, presidential.
Uh, two, four, six, and a single thing is for seven.
Seven units, yeah.
It's not, it's outrageous density.
Presidential.
You can still make a nice unit. I mean, I'm, I'm not the marketing people, so I don't know, they obviously have gone through and they figured it was best for them to develop a higher price.
No, and, and, and he could do it, he, he has to go up, that's the only way to, yeah.
Right, that's the thing, that's.
You gotta go up, you gotta, you got, you can't have standalone units.
Yeah.
You'd have to stack them in some way, you'd have the first and second floor.
Right.
Right.
Which is what we're, I mean, that was the goal, the whole thing, I mean, really, if you think about it.
Trying to get.
Well, I'm kinda leaning towards that one acre lot size for this year.
Yeah.
At least you'd see a pic, you'd get a picture of something.
Yeah, oh, right, right.
And it would open the way for dialogue, I mean, he has to be part of the conversation and probably better sooner than later.
I don't see where it changes anything.
Not much, but it, it stops him from coming in one at a time.
Well, he's gonna have. A, a developer would have to come in and show us a lot of that.
Well, yeah, but.
Much land, at least we have that to deal with this time around, in two thousand, two thousand six.
Okay, so that's an acre, right there. So he's gonna show the buildings and he's gonna, I'm just gonna do phase one, it's gonna be these three right here. And we'll put that off, we're not committing to it, it might just end up being vacant land. What, what's different than what happened on the original building? You're gonna end up with a, with three units on a half acre of land.
Do we make it two acres?
Well, I don't think it changes anything then either.
Doesn't it have the unintended consequence of possibly making him put three units on an acre? Doesn't it actually have possibly less density than what we have right now?
Yeah.
Well, you can do that now.
That's, or, it. No, that's, that, no, but that's what I mean though, it's.
It could.
By minimizing or by setting the limit at one acre, you could have the unintended consequence of.
Not intentionally, but you.
Decreasing the density. I mean, I know he can do it now, but now there's nothing, he can put it on a third of an acre if he can make it work.
I think if you're gonna do something, it should be going toward the goal of what you started out with. And the whole, the whole goal was to prevent, um, a low density or a lower density.
Right.
Housing on, on the commercial land. So if you're gonna do something, granted, you know, changing it to an acre or, or two acres might assist perhaps in us getting a vision of what's going on later. I mean, I think it really works toward the goal of a higher density.
I mean, didn't we basically do that with the Stone property? That the three units that he has over there, that he had proposed another set of units over there initially at one point? And he had trouble selling those, so it never went through.
No, you can't, right, you can't make somebody build something.
No, I know.
But what it does do, if you get the whole thing, is at least the roads and stuff get considered correctly in the beginning.
Mm-hmm.
You know, whether they get built or not, you know.
From what I understand, the sales, everybody thinks they're lagging and it's really bad right now. But in talking with the real estate people, it's about the average, it's about what it's supposed to be.
Right. Yeah.
Uh, you know, we had a real good time a few years back, but right now it's about what everybody expects as far as how long they stay in the market, how, what percentage are on the, on the market and so forth. And then, so things are selling and things are selling that are much higher density than what's right here. Now, if, if the developer just chooses to develop it this way because it maximizes the amount of money you can get for the property, then that's his choice. But I don't believe that, from what I understand from the realtors, that a higher density unit isn't selling. May not be flying off the rack, but, you know, I think that these didn't fly off the rack either. So I, I don't, I'm not so sure that the assumption that you can't sell a higher density is, is correct. It might be, but I'm not sure. I mean, I think it's price more than he else dictates it. He chooses to put a very high, the developer chooses to put a very high value on that particular piece of land and therefore he needs a certain amount to, uh, develop or to get for it, but that's choice.
Well.
Going back a square one? I mean, we, I think we all, we're all kinda saying the same thing, we'd like to see a larger picture of what development is gonna be and we'd like it to be higher density along with, you know, real commercial stuff, but we're just not gonna, how to get there.
Well, if we make it two acres, that's, that, that, uh, he can make it a P U D and get higher, he could.
I mean, he doesn't have to build it all right away anyway, so, you know.
No, but he's gonna show us the two acres.
No, he's gonna show us the plans, exactly, so.
With two acres, he could still build this.
So is that accomplishing what we want, like Terry was saying?
Not, not at the long run, no, but it, it might be the first step in doing something.
See, I, I'd be in favor of figuring this out correctly.
Okay.
Rather than just taking shots in the dark, but, uh, going to one acre or something, I don't think it's that, it's that big of a. If we go to the other one and, and he really, you know, first of all, is he even gonna show, well, anyway, that's, uh, I don't know. But I think it's, I think we need the results of that study, we need to look at what we want, what a creative, I mean, I don't have any idea whether we can rewrite these rules in such and such a way so that we can say, look, one way or the other, we're gonna end up with hotels, da, 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 that's the land that's gonna get reserved for that. And I don't know if we have a, can do that or not.
They do it in ti- other towns, I, I've developed in towns where they'll, they'll have a, a major street.
Okay.
They do it in ti- other towns, I, I've developed in towns where they'll, they'll have a, a major street.
Yeah.
And they won't break it down into this area is, is business, this area is residential, what they'll say is. In any one mile along this street, a certain percentage is going to be allotted for business, a certain percentage for high density, a certain percentage for low density.
Well, you'll take, yeah, I'd like to take a look at that.
And not on a particular location, it's just the density along, and, and the first ones to get used up, that means the rest of it's left over for whatever remains.
Right. Right. Whatever it is, right.
The street, right? The street was there.
Well, they, it's a, it's a large town, a lot of rural area, and there, there are a couple of main drags through the town, and that's the way they said.
That's, that's one of the problems with this property, in a sense, there's no street there, if you had a street there, you could say, okay, well, you know, you could use.
No, but you have a particular area that's left over, I guess is what I'm getting at, and Mark was alluding to this before, you have a particular area that's left over, if you had in your mind. We want so much for hotels, we want so much for high-density residential, we want so much for just for business, you could parcel it off. Whatever the first developer comes in and says, I wanna do this, well, if that, if there's still a percentage of that allowable remaining. That's fine, you, you approve it under that, once that's used up, and it comes in, so another developer comes in and says, I wanna do this for high, uh, high-density residential, you said, sorry, it's used up, basically.
Right.
You know, in that zone, we had certain percentage that was allowed.
See, I'd like to figure that out. And when, when, and, and, 'cause I think it's gonna be a fight to get any change in here, right, this ain't gonna be easy.
Yeah.
And, but I'd like to figure out the right way to do it to get what we want and go make a big fight out of it, 'cause it's gonna be a huge fight.
I would too, but, but when we tried before to get some sort of advice on this, it just, it was, didn't work out, it was useless, I mean, it wasn't gonna came out of it.
Yeah.
If we come up, if we come up with a, with a, with a plan. For this year. Whether you want an acre or you don't do anything, and you take two thousand and fifteen. To research and figure this all out, get maybe some legal counsel advice and work with the plan, or gonna come, I mean, what's. What's the worst-case scenario for us if, even if nothing, I'm not suggesting it, but even if nothing, we didn't take any action right now. It proposed to be piggybacking onto this development somehow, right?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't see more than the capabilities of, of, I guess, that company to do more than. What's shown there, not that he's gonna do that, but that would be the worst-case scenario, I would think, right?
Right, when you have three more units, that was a.
Yeah, or, well, you could probably put, maybe you could build six, but I mean. In the meantime, we take the approach that we need, and we start with the goal of trying to figure this out for that section of land. I, I just think, thinking, like, we're all on the same page, but I don't think we have to rush there, and I agree with Bill, we need more information.
I mean, I think we have in our head what we'd like to see there, but that doesn't mean, and, and for me, speaking for myself, after seeing Conker's proposal. That's stuck in my head, and it's like, that's not necessarily what's going to happen on this site.
Well, that's.
No, but conceptually, you want some balanced development like that, right?
Correct.
You don't care about the specifics, but, but you'd like the, 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 the fact that it was, uh, a bunch, and, and.
Correct.
You gotta leave X percent for hotels, X percent for infrastructure, you know, projects, and, um. The balance, you can.
That's what's been going through what he's had all his time.
I, I think we should, I really do.
It looks like, that, at least there was some kind of a balance to that kind of, that plan.
There was.
If, um, if nothing was done. And the developer, at the beginning of the year, decided, well, I wanna make sure that I get in under the wire here, so I'm going to show a plan and subdivide, or. Show him my plan for eighteen acres here. Um, under the old rules, and.
And make it all.
Make it all a, a plan.
Triplex, uh, condos, yeah.
So it's grandfathered. Then, anything that's done next year wouldn't apply because he's already got the approval, and if he went and built a third of it. And said, I'm not gonna do the rest of it, it, there's no, he's not obligated in any way to build the rest.
Well, he's got, he's got, it does have a time, there is a time limit, of which case, he's got so many, he's got, in so many years, if he doesn't build it, it lapses.
Four years or five years, four years, right?
Yeah.
He's got four.
Okay, so it lapses, and so then the, the land is.
Didn't that have a tempers? Yes.
Yes, but it's four years to substantial, to be substantially complete.
But it's basically. Yeah, well.
To start and finish.
Twenty, twenty acres would be substantial. Fifty, fifty percent, seventy-five percent.
Okay.
You know?
And I, and so, I still go back to, I don't see the harm in. Going to, to the, um, increased density requirement for C one. I don't, I don't see why we abandoned that. Because we didn't wanna offend somebody, or we didn't think he was here in, in, you know, in an ability to defend what's going on. But there's just no plan in front of us that, that I think.
That protects us?
Well, not so much protects us, but I mean, what's to be considered, really, to be honest with you. I mean, if you're gonna make a change, there's always gonna be something in the back of somebody's head, where you say, John, I was gonna, I was gonna develop that corner, now I can't do it.
I mean, ultimately, this is a political decision, uh, that, that we're gonna make, uh, there's no, uh, you know, you're not calling in a scientist. To say, well, you know, that it, you need this percent or that percent, but I agree with Bill that you, you need, we need to get our ducks in a row in terms of justifying the decision. And I think, you know, working on that is important, to justify the decision, but ultimately, it's gonna be a, a political decision.
And in reality.
The only downside, yeah, the, the one downside potentially could be. That I can envision, we could write a rule that essentially said, look, our, our, um. It's along these lines, that regardless of the size, you, one thing you gotta demonstrate is that, uh, that whatever, whatever plan you have. The, if it's just residential, you've gotta be able to demonstrate that you're gonna get to twelve units per acre, is the minimum density, twelve family units per acre. We're supposed to, and we could sit here and write some words to do that right now. If, if he takes, if, and, and he's probably gonna erupt, right?
Maybe.
If he takes us to court and we lose. I don't know if we'd ever be able to change it again, that's the only downside I see.
If this was owned, if this parcel of land was eighteen acres, was owned by three people. And there were three or four developers that have developed things in town, this is a hypothetical, right? We probably wouldn't care, right, I mean, we, we'd say, what do we want there, and how do we want it? And that would pretty much kind of be it, I mean, we, we'd make rules, we seem to be. We're thinking of this because one person owns the land, and there's only one developer doing any developing.
But that doesn't.
As a, but as a, as a town, is that what we should be worrying about?
That doesn't mean that one person is going to be forever holding that land, if he's been instructed to sell those parcels. Then you may be faced with those three builders.
Well, I know, that's what I'm trying to say, we should, I guess, in this upcoming year, we should decide what we want there, and however it comes out, and say, that's what we want there. We can't control who's gonna develop it, or who's gonna own the property, or whatever, but if that's, if that's the vision, let it be.
So you're saying wait?
No, I don't, you could say, you can say an acre now, or whatever, and put those things at that, and from what I understand, that can be changed later, right, in two thousand and sixteen or something, if. You come up with something that's, you have more time, e- either, well, Cat's on the bag now, so I don't know if somebody comes in, like you said, with a plan with. All of this, and we're gonna prove it, and he's gonna start building one, yeah, I know, exactly, you're gonna protect your, you're gonna protect your, what you, your land and what you wanna do with it. And that's usually what happens.
Yeah. So it seems like if we're gonna do anything, we should tie a density, because.
So we can make this change under zoning lot size, here's what we could say. In development, in, in, right, in any development involving housing only, it must be a minimum of twelve, you must be a minimum of twelve units per acre.
Pretty simple.
That's simple.
Not real complicated, you can say that.
And that would be just for C one.
Right, it's zoning, right, zoning lot size, we don't define, we say, which is, you need, in, in, in any development, right, where you're, uh, involving housing only.
That's.
Yeah.
So that would double.
You must be able, you, you, it's gotta meet a minimum of twelve units per acre.
You can, you can do more, but, so that would be, that would double that pic, that picture, actually.
Well, it would immediately stop anything. Uh, it would, I mean, I mean, but.
That would mean that one acre minimum lot size?
No, I didn't even, I didn't even say, it just, you get to twelve units, you could have a half acre if you could stick six people on it.
Okay, and where would you stick that?
I'd put it on the lot size, zoning lot size. That the standard you gotta meet on zoning lot size is, in developments involving housing only, you, you gotta meet a standard of twelve, you know. Overall density has gotta be at least twelve units per acre.
Restrict it to C one.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we're gonna write in the C one district.
It's in C one.
If that's the intent of the board, then I'd.
That will take density up.
Which seems to be what this whole thing.
Yeah.
Now, if he got some flexibility, yeah, because if he goes to two acres, he can go to P U D rules. He's still gotta meet the twelve units, but he gets a lot more flexibility about what he wants to really build, which is what we're encouraging him to do anyway.
So it seems like the best approach.
In one breath, in one breath, we're saying, we wanted to develop this at, at a higher density and so forth, you know, we wanna get these hotels.
Right, then you've done up to now.
And then, we turn around and we say, but, you know, those units don't sell, so you can't force them to build that stuff, I mean, you, you gotta take a stand somewhere.
Well, this is taking a stand.
You can look at it from a perspective of what the town wants as opposed to.
Now, I, I, I feel a little more, what would, what, a golden eagle would meet the standard of twelve units an acre, right?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You gotta be honest.
Probably half of the golden eagle would, right?
Do we have any other condos anywhere that's in town that'd be the standard of twelve?
Black Bear. Black Bear is a hundred.
No, other than condo hotels.
Windsor Hill?
No, North Face.
Do you think Windsor Hill would meet twelve units an acre?
Oh, yeah, it's a lot acre.
North Face.
It'd earn thirty-two units on.
How many acres?
Ten.
Yeah, a hundred and thirty-two.
On ten?
How about North Face?
North Face is fifty units on, I don't know how many acres.
I don't know either.
Hold on, I.
Okay.
One Valley Place.
Three, that's right.
So the rationale of making the change is say, look, what, what we're, what we're concerned about is the direction that we're heading in so far.
Presidential.
Is towards relatively low density, it was clear or not, that when this thing was set aside, the whole intent of this parcel was higher density. So we're gonna force higher density.
Yeah, One Valley Place, it's six units per acre.
Right.
The only condos.
Well, that, that's what Green Peak is, is six. Green Peak is six units an acre.
The only ones that would probably meet that are the ones on the two-story side.
Right, you need, you need to have a unit on top of a unit to make the twelve.
That's really what we want there.
You need to get, you can have larger units, but even, even Noon Peak might make it, because they've got units stacked on top, well, no, they don't. You see, they won't, because they've got individual units.
Yeah, but they still.
On three floors, and they'll never make it, they, they can't make it.
What, Noon Peak?
Yeah, I'll bet they can't. Well, because I think what you need is like, i- i- the style where you've got the two-bedroom units sitting under the bigger unit.
Well, how, how many units in Noon Peak building? There's quite a few, right?
Four.
In each building?
No, four.
Is that all?
It's just four units, no, they're big, they're three-bedroom.
Forest Rim, I think, has new units underneath.
Yeah, you, Forest Rim has units underneath.
Noon Peak has one, two, three, four per building, I think.
North Face is big, yeah. Yeah.
Four per building.
There are six.
Six in each building.
Noon, Noon Peak is just under five acres.
Twelve, twelve.
Just under five acres for Noon Peak.
And there's one, two, three, four, five. Six, twenty-four, twenty-seven, thirty, thirty-three, thirty-six units on just.
Thirty-six times four.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Really, that's.
That's nine.
No, thirty-six on five acres.
Thirty-six, thirty-six on five acres.
That's seven.
That's seven.
That's seven.
Where's that, what, what's that?
That's Noon Peak.
Noon Peak.
Um, the Osceolas, both Osceolas, both Tecumsees, well, no, sorry, both Otz, Osceolas and Tecumseh one are all six units per acre. Uh, Tecumseh two is, um, nine units. On two and a half acres, so it's just over the six acres.
Yeah, and, and the whole idea about C one is you wanted to compare it as much as you can.
But those are all on. Yeah, those are all on high density.
Those are all on high-density residential properties, so, so I'm just saying, those are comparison-wise.
Right.
Right, absolutely. Right. Yeah.
Right.
And then you've got the Windsor Hills, which is up thirteen units per.
Yeah.
Per acre. Um, Village is thirteen acres for, I think it's, what, eighty-four units.
That can be said.
Yeah, there's a lot.
You're gonna get right into another problem, or, I don't know, problem, but when you do this, and you stack, you're going back to the parking. There's no garage under for somebody on a second.
Seven.
Or, or for it.
Seven and a half.
So you end up with.
But look, you know, look at Windsor Hill, it's got thirteen per acre, it's got green space, it's got parking, it's got all of those things you want.
Got a pool.
And a pool, yeah.
So, I mean, it can be done, and those are all on H D land, so I don't even think they're, it's applicable to talking about C one, 'cause C one, we really want density. We don't want another Windsor Hill in C one. Even though it meets that density thing, which they wouldn't build anyway, but.
No, but you were looking for a golden eagle or a black bear, I mean, from my understanding, yeah.
Yeah, we're looking for, right. So by making the density this year at twelve, that's.
It's not prohibitive.
Not prohibitive. And as Bill said, it pushes them towards a P U D, yeah.
End of conversation, which we really need to have, no, I mean, we're gonna start, it's gonna be a year-long, however-long thing, we're gonna, we're gonna start hashing it out.
So. Well, I don't know. I will make a motion to change, well, because if we don't get a motion, we're gonna eventually, change section three, four, point one, point eight, point four, point one zoning lot size. And it would now read, no minimum lot size, but developments involving housing only must meet a minimum standard of twelve units per acre.
I'll second.
So two.
Discussion?
Yeah. Why not? So we don't care, two, so. All right, no lot, no minimum lot size.
That's what I, I made a motion, no minimum lot size, I think the density is more important, if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna stab a finger in his eye, you know?
And I'm sure we're gonna.
Well, don't forget, this is going to a public hearing in December, so.
Right.
If you don't, if, if you leave the language out about no minimum lot size, and you just use that. Well.
Well, because right now, it's zoning, it says it's not applicable, so I think it is important to say that in this zone, we have no minimum lot size. But developments involving housing only have gotta meet a standard of twelve units per acre. Now, here's what it doesn't say, if you put commercial in with it, rules are, you know, rules don't apply.
Right.
And if you could figure out a way to put twelve units on, you know, uh, twenty-four, you know, I think it's six units on a half acre, he, he got it, we let him do it.
'Cause it's housing only, so you combine it with something else, and it's.
So he can come in, create, uh, create a four-acre lot. Build just the twelve units and decide.
Twelve times four, you have to build forty-eight, if he can, can come in with a plan for forty-eight units on four acres, that's, that'd be fine.
Okay, so he'd have to come in with a plan for the whole four acres then, if he created that lot size.
If he creates a lot size, yeah.
Okay.
Well, we're saying, we're not gonna, we'd say you have any minimum.
What if you were to put a real estate office in one of the?
Well, that's always the technicality, so now you get into, so he builds a unit, and now he, and in the corner makes a small office.
Right.
Uh, you know, it's the.
Well, but, but you could still make the, uh. Well, that, would that be in addition to the twelve?
No, it would be more.
No, not the twelve.
It would, it would be.
No, it's a mix.
It's gonna be a problem.
It would be a mix for the twelve.
I, I think we, I, I think that, my view would be, if we did something like this, it would be an interim only, we still need to go to what Terry was talking about before.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And only doing this for one more year to force, to prevent.
Oh, no, I, I, I hear you there, 'cause I think.
You, you know, you'd, you'd have to go to the next.
Oh, no, I, I, I hear you there, because I think it's, it's setting this a little bit more.
You, you know, you'd, you'd have to go to the next stage. And I'd like to, and frankly, I'd like to find out, do we in fact have excess parking spaces available if and out there? And in the course of doing something with this, find some productive use for those? Because I think that'd provide some leverage to do some more things.
Just remember though, somebody, if somebody's gonna build, anybody that's gonna buy, I don't, because I don't know exactly what you meant by that, but from what I'm taking part of it is, if somebody's gonna buy one of these new units, and let's say there's a second floor, they're not gonna wanna have to park on shared parking somewhere, right?
No, I didn't say anything about parking.
Oh.
No, no, I was saying that the conclusion of the people from Vermont was that we've got excess parking spaces in some areas of town square. Yeah, I, I, I think we ought to try to figure that out. And, and I'm assuming the guy, the person who's gonna get the windfall out of that is the Waterville company. If we ever change those rules that declared now you've got surplus parking.
Right.
Well, there's some relief to some of the pain to have to do some of this stuff.
Right, right.
You know, so it's not all lose-lose, you know?
But I think this is the first step for fifteen, or at least it's-
This will stop, it will stop any plans they had for Green Peak right now.
Well, if you just had a min, if you just had a minimum, or defined a minimum one-acre lot. How did you phrase it?
I said, there is no minimum lot size, but developments involving housing only must be able to demonstrate they meet a density of twelve units per acre.
If I had a minimum of, if, if there was a minimum of one-acre lot size and you want to do a two-acre project, what?
You could do a half-acre project, one-acre project, two acres, three acres, four acres.
You just gotta use the rule of density.
You just gotta use this ratio. So if you had one acre, you'd have to have six on it. If you did an acre, it'd have to have twelve on it. If you did two acres, it'd have to have twenty-four.
Three quarters, nine.
Nine, right. Whatever that proportion is, you gotta meet it.
So he can't come, but he can come in with a plan. That's okay.
He could come, he could come in with a plan for, here's how I'm gonna develop the next half acre, and I'm putting six units on it.
Or he could come in, could he come in with a plan and say, okay, I'm, here's a, a, a two-acre parcel I'm gonna develop, and here's my plan. And we approve the plan. He still doesn't, he just doesn't need to be a builder right away. He's just-
He's got four years. He's got four years.
Or does he have to cover, or does he have to-
Four years.
Okay, you're under that, all right.
No, 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 yeah, if he comes in and says, here's my plan, roads, everything else for two acres, right? And, and here's the, and, and here's the twenty-four units. He could start by developing section A of it.
We have a motion on, on the floor and it's been seconded, so I'm gonna call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now, just for the, well, I guess I don't have to go for the record if it's unanimous, okay.
Right.
You didn't ask for nays.
Oh, yeah.
Do you want nays? You didn't ask for nays.
No, I didn't.
All nays.
Do you want a nay?
But it's all unanimous, right?
I don't know.
You didn't ask for the nays, any nays. Anybody abstaining?
Okay, we're now unanimous, so I don't think I have to do nays, no, because it's, it's all with seen and known.
No, no, no.
Do you wanna talk about any more of this zoning stuff?
Hell, no.
Done. Cry.
Wait, wait, what about the garage? Can we just quickly squeeze in the garage? Is this our last day to put something on? So the garages are town's parking space? We're kind of in agreement with that, right?
Yeah.
And that's important.
And we, I thought we basically agreed about that.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Well, we gotta make a motion to change the wording in that section.
Well, we've got, there's a couple of other things that I think we agreed upon. In definitions, should we add a parking space, uh, shared? And, and the parking space restricted, do we wanna add those as, as definitions?
I don't know.
I don't see any problem with adding definitions. I don't see any-
There's no harm in that.
There's no harm in definitions.
The definition-
Except, except if we add them, then now, now we gotta put something in the regulations to talk about shared parking, parking places.
Well- The shared, you're talking about, the way it's written, from my understanding, is just related to businesses, right? That's the way it seems to be written. Is that?
No.
No, it says private ownership.
No, it says private ownership or public.
Private ownership. Yeah, and I'm not a wordsmith, so don't, don't-
Well, private, it could be private ownership of a business, right?
What is meant by unified? You're, you're looking at this, oh, you're up in the definitions, okay.
Yeah, for now. And if we can put the definitions in, then I think we have to put something in the body of them.
Well, why don't we skip that and agree on garages and wait on that?
I don't think there's any harm in a definition that's not used elsewhere in the body of, I mean, what's harm? Maybe, you might-
Oh, I bother.
Well, because you might be putting something in later.
Well, then we'll put the definition in.
Fine.
Right.
I just, I just see this first one as, as a several private ownership or public businesses. I, I would say that's restricted to, if somebody owns a private business.
But if we don't need to use them for the regulations right now, why are we adding the definitions?
Okay. Yeah, because I, if we're gonna put in shed, then I think we gotta put in under parking places, additional shared parking places may be located on a separate lot within five hundred foot, or something to that effect. So, yeah, we can skip that. We can not do this for fifteen. I don't see any hardship.
But, but let's do the garages, though.
Well, I don't know. If we're not gonna do anything else, then why do we have to do the garages?
Because we can't plan for a municipal garage, because that's not parking.
Oh, yes. Didn't work it inside dwelling.
And it may impact, if, if we put that in, it may impact, uh, uh, another phase of development of that. Where is that thing, anyway?
That thing.
Section B, garage.
The, the look of-
The plan?
The plan that we just had on.
Your thing?
Yeah. I didn't get it back.
No, I didn't.
I don't have it.
So under garages, the definition is now written, if I, if I, if I use my front porch as parking, does it qualify?
As a garage?
Well, it says, inside the dwelling unit.
Put a ramp?
I'm sorry, nobody, I'm fine.
Maybe-
Maybe we're not ready for this.
Yeah.
No, no, I'm, I'm fine with it. I'm fine with it. I think it's one of those fights, we've, we've, we've been yelling for, you can't count the garages, it's crazy. We should count the garages.
I agree, I, I mean, at this stage-
The, the, the space outside the garage is a little more problematic, but-
Why can't we just say parking spaces inside-
Garages.
Garages are, are considered-
How about that?
Yeah, sorry. Off-street parking.
Are considered, yeah, inside garages.
Instead of inside dwelling units, put in garages.
Or inside garages meet off-street parking requirements of this section.
Parking requirements. That might be even better.
Say that again?
Parking spaces in garages meet off-street parking space requirements of this section.
Meet off-street parking space requirements.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You with us, Jerry?
Don't. About what? That question's scary.
No, don't.
Wendy, would you like to make that motion?
Uh, I'll make the motion that, um, is this for sure the right number to put it in, in section?
Yeah, well, I'll, remember, we're going back to the other zoning ordinance, two thousand and twelve, so I'll make sure that they match.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, that for garages, that parking spaces inside garages meet off-street parking space requirements for this section.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Well, okay.
Second was by Harry?
No, I did, yeah, I heard that. And I'm just trying to recalibrate myself. What's section B?
We didn't vote on that, yeah.
No, no, well, we're gonna have a discussion. I just wanna recalibrate myself. Is that just in C one with section B? That must be off-street parking. Okay, so that's not in C one.
No.
No, it's Article five.
Okay, yeah, okay, I'm good. Discussion. Well, let somebody say something.
Let's pass it.
I like it.
Me too. Should've been passed a long time ago.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
All against? Unanimous. Okay, so we don't have to do a head count. So that's two things in zoning.
Probably gonna count the garages as a dwelling unit.
You want to do lighting?
No.
I can, I can, I can wait, there's nothing that's gonna really go forward, just overview of-
It looks like a good start for discussions.
Yeah, like, the, the problem with the lighting, and I, I think I'm, I'm, I'll make this like five minutes and we won't get into too much of it, but just a, an idea. S E group talks about, um, lighting zones, which you could overlay a C one area where there's uh, businesses and, or, so you could have different lighting zones in, in, in C one for, for that purpose. The, one of the problems with the lighting, um, you, we're dealing with lumens and lumens per square foot and, and all of that. I mean, you've gotta be an engineer to figure some of this out. So, my vision or, or thought process is, would be, you know, try to identify, um, types of lights to be used, which, um, and fully shielded lights so that you can deal with the glare and all that stuff. And, um, wattage of certain types of bulbs and whatever, and stay out of the lumens business per square foot. I mean, you're gonna have to get a slide rule up to calculate some of this stuff.
It's usually by code, anyway, isn't it? Right, that, isn't that covered in codes?
But depending on what you adopt. But how do you enforce it? You got public safety or whoever go out and somebody's gonna-
No, you, you get, you get an engineer to design a plan and certify that it meets your requirements. And then if you get somebody who challenges you, it's up to the property owner to show that they're not violating the law. And there are, there are ways to measure lumens and, and all that, but you don't, no, we don't go out with a meter and say, there's too much light here.
It, it just looked to me like, and I, and there's obviously a reason for it, but it just seems to be a complicated way of-
Well, the bottom line, the bottom line from the S E group's thing was, we don't have enough light. And the light that we have right now is not in the right place.
No.
So we need to redesign our lighting scheme for the town to light those places, light more without, light pollution.
With, with, with less environment.
And, and light it in the correct space.
Right.
So that the pedestrianization is improved because people feel safer moving from point A to point B.
Right.
That's the bottom line.
I agree.
Yep.
I mean, I think we can live within the, probably within the lumens that we have. Just put the light bulbs in different places.
In the right spots, right.
And try to, um-
I don't, I don't think we need to change anything in our ordinance.
Just sort of, as an aside to this, um, Osceola, just the change their light fixtures, they're very nice. And they get rid of the old globes and it's, it's, um, night sky compliant, it looks like to me, and-
Good for them. They didn't ask us, they didn't ask us to approve anything.
Approve anything?
No.
Didn't give a building permit?
No. Yeah. Every, I'd say probably right now, seventy-five to eighty percent of the condo developments in the town have changed their lighting within the last three years. And we haven't gotten a single, we haven't gotten a single building permit for any of them, that I'm aware of.
You're losing, you're losing revenue.
Yeah.
And supposedly, and supposedly it's the same thing.
But it's good, but supposedly, they're all dark sky compliant and everything, so, you know, we're not-
But some people, some places have replaced one due to accidents or, or whatever, and they're supposed to comply with the new ones, and they don't. They put the old ones back up.
We got rid of a lot of globes.
Good.
And that's nice.
Oh, that's good.
It is.
Okay, we're not-
That's it.
Wendy, just say, say one more quick thing in one minute. His recommendations for parking, he had a lot of recommendations to, to reduce some of the requirements. And I'm looking at the bottom of our matrix on section C, and, and that gives us, the, the planning board the authority to increase or decrease parking places. So I really don't think we have to do anything with that for five, with fifteen anyway, because we got that authority. We can reduce the parking.
If you can.
Yeah, the only thing one snow load was one issue.
And you argue about it every time we have a-
We always want more.
Because it always, well, some people-
No, but his recommendations were to reduce. We can do that.
They come back and challenge.
Right. That's correct.
And we can increase too, but we don't need this, so. Okay. Have another motion?
I make a motion to adjourn. I'll second that.
All in favor?